Evening, everybody. Welcome to the Hoyoke School Committee meeting. It is February 26 at 6:05 PM. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. All right, welcome, welcome. I don't think we have anybody on Zoom, but we'll do a roll call for attendance, please. That's okay, I can do it. Mayor Garcia?
Here.
Ms. Brunel is here. Ms. LaFave?
Present.
Dr. Yadiela Rivera Cologne?
Here.
Dr. Caballero?
Present.
Mr. Willihan?
Here.
Mr. Collmore?
Here.
Ms. Wilson?
Here.
And we have one of our student reps with us tonight, Evan Kennedy from the Dean Campus. And for the record, we are missing Gustavo Romero and Rosalie Tensley-Williams this evening. A couple quick housekeeping announcements, so please bear with me. On March 29, 2023, Governor Haley signed into law an Act relative to extending certain state in emergency accommodations, which among other things extends the expiration of the provisions pertaining to the open meeting law to March 31, 2025. Specifically, this extension allows public bodies to continue holding meetings remotely without a quorum of the public body physically present at a meeting location and to provide adequate alternative access to remote meetings. The Act does not make any new changes to open meeting law other than extending the expiration date of the temporary provisions regarding remote meetings in March 25, 2023. Notice is hereby given in accordance with Chapter 28 of the Acts of 2009, Section 1720, General Law. The regular meeting of the school committee will be held today. And just a reminder, this meeting is being broadcasted and recorded on Zoom. All right, so moving right in. I don't think we have anybody here for public comment, and I did not receive any emails from public comment. So we'll move right into student reports. Thank you for joining us, Mr. Kennedy.
All right. The first thing is the wrestling team led by coaches Vincilano, Aaron Feliz, and Louis Robles, and Sheldon Roden have received the Covenant MIAA. The team won their first Massachusetts Interscholastic Athletic Association Sportsman Award. They won it during the Division II State Tournament at Algonquin Regional High School in Northborough over the weekend. And continuing with the theme of wrestling, our senior, Isabella Guzman, took sixth place on the state final for her weight class. Next, continuing with celebrations, we had our end of access testing celebration that took place today. Ninth, tenth, and eleventh grade had ice cream sundae stations. The 12th graders chose to have fried chicken, a fried chicken dinner meal. And lastly, last week, students who needed to buy back attendance came to school. They reorganized Chromebook cards, decorated bulletin boards, such as the senior commitments, and hung international flags around the school.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. I had done some late file motions to the agenda tonight, so I'd like to entertain a motion that we take out of order under New Business Item 3, Correspondence from the E&amp;Y PTO, because it had gotten bumped when I added the new things, and I hadn't realized that. So if I could entertain a motion to take that out of order, please? Thank you, can I have a second?
Second.
We do not need to roll call because no one's on Zoom, so any further discussion? Mr. Collmore? Oh, sure, sorry, Ronnie.
I'd like to make a motion that we, as a board, congratulate the wrestling team for winning the state championship.
Yeah, yeah, I actually just asked the superintendent if possibly they could be our student showcase at our next meeting. So on the motion, do we have a second? Second, thank you. Any further discussion?
It's not even sportsmanship that we're talking about, but it's my opinion, own opinion. It's better than a championship award. Better than a sportsmanship. Important award this school can get, not just Dean, but our school system on sportsmanship. That is wonderful that it comes out from Dean's school, because I've known we've got it from baseball and basketball. This is the first time that I know we have it from people. The school committee, I'd like to make that motion.
Thank you. Just a reminder to speak into your microphone, please. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, so we'll invite them to maybe be our student showcase at the next meeting, if not possibly the meeting after that. It's great news. Okay, so on the original motion, if anyone needs a reminder, it's to take the item out of order. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. Excuse me for one second. Okay, so I'd also like to entertain a motion to suspend the rules to allow the members of the PTO to come up to the microphone for their presentation.
Make a motion.
I'll do Ms. Dr. Caballero on the motion and Mr. Willihan on the second, please. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you so much, folks. If you could come up and have a seat, please make sure your green light is on your microphone so you can speak.
The PTO.
I added this to the agenda tonight when I received a letter from the PTO. I can't thank you all enough for being involved in the runnings and the happenings of your school. I think PTOs are a critical connection between the organizations and the parents and the students. So I was just grateful to receive communication and to know that we have people advocating on behalf of our students. So with that, I'd like to give you guys the opportunity to read the letter that you wrote. I know you had come to public comment a while ago, but we're not allowed to comment on that, so I wanted to formalize this and see what discussions we can have to help better serve our students. So please, by all means, if you could all introduce yourselves first as well, thank you.
My name is Meg McGrath Smith, and I am a parent of a pre-K and third grader at Ian White. I live at Seven Mikeoff Avenue, Hoyoke.
Hi, my name is Maria Chambers. I am the parent of a kindergartner, Ian White, and I am the secretary on the PTO.
My name is Kyle Chambers. I am also the parent of a kindergartner at Ian White. And I also, I work at UMass Amherst. I'm a member of the Mass Team Association. Thank you all for having us here.
Welcome, thank you for coming. If you want to start off by reading the letter that you sent to us all to help ensure that everybody has heard it and that way it can go on the record as well, and then we can go from there.
Thank you very much. Dear Hoyoke Public Schools Administration and members of the school committee, we know that the COVID-19 pandemic has had lasting impacts on academic performance, attendance, and the social-emotional well-being of our students. As educators and parents, we can all agree that putting children first should be at the forefront of everything we do in the schools. However, it seems that we are falling short in several key areas in Hoyoke Public Schools. We are asking children to be focused for extended lengths of time without breaks, a feat that most adults are incapable of. This approach is having a negative effect on the social-emotional well-being, classroom behaviors, attendance, and academic performance of our students. Current research suggests that there are several ways we can make improvements for our learners to thrive. First point would be recess. There is a breadth of research that links increased recess time to higher academic achievement, reduced absenteeism, and improved classroom behaviors. Currently, Hoyoke Public Schools offers elementary students 15 minutes of recess daily, often with no transition built in. At times, the shortening of the recess is used as a punishment for student behaviors. This is often a whole-class punishment for the disruption of a few. This is in direct contradiction to the district wellness policy published in 2020, which promises to, quote, "make sure that current school guidelines do not allow physical activity to be withheld," i.e. withholding recess, "or used as a punishment." This reduction in physical activity and socialization contributes to disruptive classroom behaviors, childhood obesity, and limits students' ability to learn critical skills such as peer collaboration, impulse control, emotional regulation. Action steps. Students need 30 minutes of recess daily to be active and socialized with their peers. Recession should not be shortened as a punishment. Children who are learning impulse control and emotional regulation benefit from increased physical activity. Digital devices should not be used for indoor recess. In order to promote healthy socialization, teamwork, and conflict resolution, options could include board games, card games, building toys, arts and crafts, and reasonable physical activity.
School lunch. The CDC recommends that all students have 20 minutes after they are seated in which to eat their lunch. Hoyoke Public Schools currently offers a total of 15 minutes for elementary students to get their lunch, eat, and clean up. Snack breaks seem to be at teacher discretion and not consistently offered across all elementary grade levels. The CDC research shows that students who are allowed adequate time to eat are known to consume more key nutrients for proper cognitive function. Allowing adequate time for students to eat also reduces food waste. Additional research shows that schools that provide students with healthy meals have reduced rates of absenteeism. A recent study published in the Journal of School Health found that, quote, "improving the quality of students' food at school was just as effective and cheaper than some of the programs designed to reduce absences." Action steps. Provide all students with a 30-minute lunch break daily. Increase the nutritional quality of the food that is being offered. And ensure that students in all grades are offered a snack time during the day. This does not have to be outside of learning time.
Lastly, screen time and apps as instruction. Digital literacy and computer science are vital components of a 21st education. However, we're highly concerned with the overreliance on apps as a method of instruction. Even our youngest students are being asked to compete and are rewarded for the most time completed on apps. Our students are consistently going over recommended daily screen limits during their school day alone. And often, more than 50% of instructional time is spent on apps or on a screen in some way, including their win intervention block. A recent study published in the Journal of Pediatric Healthcare points to digital reading being associated with decreased reading comprehension skills in elementary and middle school students. Children are also allowed to use devices during free time where the content they are consuming is unsupervised, which has led to students having access to online content that parents deem inappropriate. Action steps. Limit the required weekly app time to 30 minutes per platform, whether that's ST Math or Lexi or Ice Station, and ensure that elementary students are getting no more than one hour a day of total screen time. Ensure that all the state standards for digital literacy and computer science are being taught. Ensure that all accessible content is educationally appropriate and ensuring that all classrooms are equipped with educational enriching activities for students to use during free time rather than using a digital device. We all want to support our students' education and academic outcomes. Educating the whole child to foster healthy habits and relationships is critical to the success of our schools. We thank you, Mr. Soto, Ms. Brunel, for attending our recent PTO meeting, and we look forward to your timely response to discuss how these action steps can be implemented. Sincerely, the Ian White PTO.
Thank you guys so much for that letter. Did you have any other further thoughts or things, anything else you want to add before I open it up for discussion?
I just want to say that we have an active PTO at Ian White. We regularly have over 30 parents who are involved. It is a vibrant community, and it's well-representative of all grade levels and the diversity in our building as a dual-language community. And this is a concern that we've talked about for months, and it keeps coming up again and again. And I think as a PTO, we have done what we can to make clear to the school that they have our support. This is what we want. These are our children. We have a clear sense of some things that need to happen in order for us to feel like we are entrusting Hoyoke Public Schools with our children, and you're doing good work to create an environment that is the right environment for them. As a school, we've also started to see parents leave and pull their kids out of Ian White and other elementary schools that we are aware of, and pull their kids to other districts where they are not doing these things. They are responding to parents, and they're not allowing these things to continue. We are the only district that is giving 15 minutes of recess in a region that is rich with school choice options. You can send your kid somewhere else tomorrow. And area towns are balancing their budgets based on us sending our kids there. I want my kids to stay. And I want the school community to be something that is providing for them a rich environment that is not based on screens, that is not, you know, so obsessed with, you know, creating more activities for them that are academic, that they're not willing to give them the recess they need in order to be successful with academics. It's a lot to ask a young child to sit still except for 15 minutes a day. I don't think that sounds reasonable to anyone in this body. And we need your help, because from the school level, there's a lot of pressure. They know they need to get test scores up. They need to achieve a certain amount of scholastic success. And so they're reaching for, what can we do, right? Let's try this program, let's try this instructional model. And as a result, they're saying there's not enough time for recess, when we know that that negatively affects academics. We also see the screen time piece is connected to the recess piece, because they're saying that we need kids to be on time for learning. That's the issue, that's why they can't have recess. We have to have more academic time. But a lot of that academic time is on apps. So an instructional model has happened, whether or not you've ever approved it, and I don't think you did, where most teachers now are instructing as if their instructional model with their 60-minute block is they're teaching half of the class, them with their mini lesson, and the rest of the students are on an app, and they are not directly supervised. They are supposed to be doing this thing to get minutes or to achieve levels or to complete Lesson 5. And they're being assigned the task to keep them busy. And it may be academically connected, but it is not instruction. They are not the same. And then they're switching. Okay, we've now finished the lesson. Now you go on ST Math, and I'm going to work with you now. And then they switch. So they're saying there's not enough time for recess, but then that's what academic instruction looks like. Sounds to me like there could be a different model that could be created so that students are getting more recess time. I think it's really important, and I really think the school committee is the one to do the work to make this change. Thank you.
Just to add, my wife and I, when we were trying to figure out where to send our son to school, when he was accepted to the dual-language program at Ian White, we were actually very happy. I've seen what wonderful things the Ian White dual-language program can do. When I was growing up, we had a clear divide between English-speaking learners and Spanish-speaking, English as a second language learners. There was always this clear divide. And now what we're seeing with the dual language is that divide is blurred significantly, and that is a wonderful thing. There are bones here on this skeleton that are absolutely great. But there are things that don't work, and we need to take a hard look and determine what those things are for our kids. We all have our kids' best interests at heart. I don't doubt that. There isn't a single person in here that I don't think has my son's best interests at heart. There are some things that we need to look at and say, you know what, this isn't working. And that's part of building a program. That's how you lead.
Thank you guys very much, Ms. Wilson.
So, um, I'm going to second, you know, thank you for being here. I appreciate that, I appreciate the, your ability to come together and take action on behalf of your children. I think that's wonderful. What I'd like to find out is a little information as to why would a student be withheld from going out to recess? Why, in your experience, what have parents shared with you, students shared with you, when the teacher has not, like, has kept them back from recess? What's occurred?
So this was something that two different parents brought up over a few meetings, the feeling that students were kept back at recess so they could complete tasks that they had not completed during their academic block. And I can't speak to it personally because it has not happened to my child.
Okay. No, I'm just trying to understand that. Thank you so much.
Are you all set, Ms. Wilson?
Yes, I'll let someone else go next.
Dr. Caballero?
Thank you so much. Thank you for sharing the letter for, as Ms. Wilson said, taking action and its leadership at the end of the day and how we can support our children better. It's about, like you mentioned in your letter, it's that intersectionality of quality of life inside a school community. Committee, uh, community. It's quantitative and it's qualitative. We're talking about how are our students going to perform, you know, if the food is of low quality? If they don't have the mobility which they need to really become, you know, themselves? Because we socialize and we become humans by socializing. And also, well, of this technology, how can we find a balance between technology, instructional time, and learning? And that's a question that I would love to, you know, have some input from you, because it's also true that apparently there is that push for the use of technology, but are they learning critical thinking and critically reading the material? Is there that conversation going on while at the same time, if the food is not of high quality? If they are not using that kinetic energy that is so important to develop? Well, how are we going to be able to continue supporting our children in Ian White and in Hoyoke in general if we are not taking actions? As you are very well recommending, we need to support the work that you're doing. We need to reach out more to more parents to really let us know how can we support the work that you need, that you think that your children need to really develop their full potential and really perform the way they should be performing? Thank you so much for your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. So to your point about the food and the nutrition, I actually, I was doing some research on an old psychology topic, Maslow's hierarchy of needs, right? So for those of you that aren't, you have this pyramid, right? And at the top, you have self-actualization, where you want our students to be. Doesn't always happen, but it's there, right? At the bottom, you have your very basic needs, such as food, clothing, shelter, right? Basic things, basic necessity that anybody needs, right? And so if our students are down there, they're not learning, right? They're not, if they're hungry throughout the day, they're not focused on learning. If our kids are loaded with sugar, same thing, they're not learning, right? So we need to find a way to get them off that bottom tier and bring them up a little higher to where they will actually be capable of learning the material. So I mean, I mean, I'll talk to my own experience. Our son will often come home, and he didn't have time to eat. He has 15 minutes a day to eat his food, and we've packed him lunches, things that he would actually enjoy, but how many times has he come home and we have a lunchbox that is still full? Because he didn't have the time to eat. By the time they shuttle all these kids into the cafeteria, right? Get them organized, they might have like a couple of minutes. And they're not used to that regimen. This isn't the military, this is kindergarten. And so they're not getting the nutrition that they need. So right now, there are a lot of those kids are going hungry throughout the day. And that's not okay, quite frankly.
We did have a number of parents who have spoken over the last few months about children coming home with lunch still in their lunchboxes and children saying that they just don't have enough time to eat, just in the transition. It's hard for them to get settled and actually eat, and then they have to start packing up a few minutes before. They only have 15 minutes. So it's actually maybe about eight minutes of eating time. It's not a lot. And of course, you know, we've got some pokey pre-K and kindergartners who are not... Also, it's, you know, again, because lunches, you know, by the time you get there, you have your eight minutes to eat, and you're going to transition to recess, which again is like you're building in the transition there. So you have to transition from lunch. By the time you get outside, that's when recess starts within that 15-minute block. So actually getting less than 15 minutes of recess time, because it's also part of the transition to get back into the building, is that 15 minutes as well. And so if that's like all you're socializing for the day, and these are also children coming out of like the COVID era, they like need social skills. They need to learn how to connect with each other in appropriate ways and also blow off steam so they can come back in, re-energize, and able to focus. And because so many of our students, half of our staff and students are in a different building this year, so many of our students are new to each other. They need to get to know each other. We had a parent at one point that said they had not made a single, their kid had not made a new friend yet, right? Because they are trying to figure out, like, where am I supposed to make friends? And like meet other kids and connect, but here's the limited time I'm being given in the day.
I just wanted to add too, and in case you haven't noticed, he and I have the same child. But yes, we do. And our son, we lucked out. He is a wonderful little boy. He loves to learn. He was in daycare at age one and learned how to read in pre-K. And I can tell, he loves to learn, and he loved preschool. I can tell that he doesn't enjoy school as much anymore. There are days where, and I ask him every day, what was your favorite thing about the day? Did you have a good day? A lot of days, it's no, because he sits around all day and does work. And that's a huge shift for a kid going from preschool to kindergarten. I went to Hoyoke Schools. I went to Donahue, Hoyoke High, Class of 2003. I was the one that was pretty adamant about our child going to Hoyoke Schools. My husband was like, nope, I had a terrible experience, we're going to go out. And we did apply out. But we got into the dual language, and we wanted to try it. And we do really like it. But at the end of the day, if the school doesn't meet our kids' needs, we're going to pull them out. Like, that's just it, because my child comes first, you know? As much as I love living here and as much as I want him to be here and have that upbringing, at the end of the day, if things don't get better and I don't see him flourishing, I'm going to pull him out.
Mr. Kennedy?
I think that all the points that you made were really, really good, especially the point of, like, obviously, technology is a huge part of modern education. Like, I just spent, like, I think, last school year, like, 11 hours in one course just to get certified. But this is high school and college. That's when the technology really comes into play. Elementary school, you need to be focusing on the baseline things, how to communicate with each other, how to, you know, talk, read, do math. On the topic of electronics, we also need to be thinking about how adequate is the education coming from these websites? When I was doing like ST Math, a lot of the kids weren't actually paying attention to the computer or what was happening. They were just kind of finding little hacks to get through the little curriculum that were on there. So they're not engaged, they're just staring at a computer, and I don't know, I don't remember how long the classes were, like 30 minutes, an hour, I don't know. Sitting in front of a Chromebook or a computer for that long is not, is not adequate education. And like, being engaged is a huge, huge part of being in elementary school. You need to like learn these social skills, because like we're heading in a direction right now where like kids are growing up and not like with like really bad social anxiety, because they didn't learn the base roots, but one of those kids, like, because we didn't learn like the roots of how to do that, because we were stuck in front of our computer. So yeah, it's a really, it's a really big thing. And also like, you know, how much is it really helping? Like, a technology is a huge resource, but we don't need to be focusing on it that young.
I'd be happy to speak on that as well. So I mentioned earlier, I work up at UMass Amherst. I work in the registrar's office. I don't know, I don't have the exact statistics, but there are a lot of students that come our way that have disability accommodations because of things like a... I have seen that number rise in the two years that I've worked there. I think a lot of students are going through the system, and they are finding themselves with that social anxiety. And this is the time, kindergarten, first grade, second grade, this is where they're learning those skills. So this, I mean, it's as important. I realize the state probably doesn't see it that way, but those social schools are paramount, right? This is how you live. So I mean, it's, don't get me wrong, I took a class in high school, Microsoft Office Suite, and I loved that class. Like, to this day, that was one of the best choices I ever made. But he's in kindergarten, right? He's not learning to type with Mavis Beacon.
I see. Ms. LaFave?
Thank you. Thank you again for being here. I remember, recall, sad to say, but quite a number... quite a number of years ago, we were talking about this and it was even when we were in receivership in regards to the amount of time that students are allotted for meal breaks plus recess time. And at that point, we wanted the thirty minutes and we were getting twenty. So the mere fact that now it got even more shorter is very concerning. Us as adults, right? And I know if you ask people, it'd be like, yeah, I may get it, but I really don't have time to do it, but that's per choice. But technically, you work an eight-hour shift, you're given a thirty-minute lunch break, right? Some get a thirty, a fifteen and a fifteen. We also have the ability for most of us to be able to drink something while either you're sitting at your desk or whatever in whatever line of work, except nurses, we're not allowed to drink at the nurse's station. So that's when you use the med room and you chug it down. With that being said, it's when we're looking at even what's being reported by the state, when they're looking at chronic absenteeism and all this stuff, and they talk about all of these initiatives. And working with the child as the whole child, I mean, this is part of working with the child as a whole child. We really need to start looking at ways that we need to incorporate things that are actually going to help them throughout the day. The expectation of having kindergartners sitting, even if it's for three hours straight before they go to a lunch break. Or let's say that their lunch break is at ten AM and they ain't getting home till two. Even eating that early and having the rest of the day with nothing. That also impacts how they're going to perform academically. And that also has it also increases behaviors, right? So if we're really going to be looking at data and what maybe the triggers to the behaviors or students not wanting to come to school, it could be the environment itself, right? And it's not that it's not safe, it's just, it's not an engaging one. So I'm hoping that with this, we really start looking. Well, I mean, we as a school committee, we can recommend, like, this is something that's really important. If we're looking at the student as a whole child, but obviously, we don't have the decision at the end. But hopefully, this is something that we can start looking towards doing. Because if we really do want to see improvements, we start, need to start making some changes.
Mr. Collmore?
Just a question here. How much time do we have for recess?
It varies school by school right now.
School by school, so we don't control it?
We do not have a district-wide policy right now on recess and lunch. We discussed it earlier, yes. So we don't know, so it's school by school. So each principal currently, based on the size of their building, how many students, how many lunches they have, how their day runs. Of course, with permission from central office dictates what they have currently.
If we take it and we'll say, for example, it's a half hour. Are we better off splitting that half hour for two recesses and let the children go out and have a break once in a while? Which which they need completely. I, my whole thing is they they need more time for relaxation. And then go back into the classroom and do their work and they they will, the students will work if they have the anxiety to get out there and have a little time off, I say time off, just to get that pressure off of them.
Yeah, so in October, this was brought up at our full meeting and the order was referred to policy, which was discussed tonight between five and six. The order at the time, I mean, we don't file orders, but the recommendation at the time, which I proceeded with was that we establish a morning recess and then a district-wide lunch and recess policy at a minimum of forty-five minutes for everybody for lunch and recess. So that's currently being discussed in policy. At tonight's meeting, it was tabled because we want to be able to gather more information, meet with some principals and stakeholders to ensure that whatever policy we decide to put forward is something that the building administrations feel like they can work within as well.
Okay, I I just want to know if we can split it up and have two recesses or some time during the day, not just everyone in the classroom and then they're released for fifteen minutes. That that doesn't work. These children need to just, even if they don't go outside, just a time to relax, take it easy.
I would encourage people to attend when Ms. Wilson makes her schedule an agenda when that's on, to attend and and be part of the conversation. So that way, when we put together a recommendation of a policy, it's fruitful and it had a lot of input and a lot of thought that went into it. Mr. Soto, please?
Yeah, first of all, thank you for for coming, I appreciate the the message and the engagement. I was happy to be, go to the meeting with with Ms. Brunel. You know, I will be taking all of your recommendations and working with my team to see what we can do. I know I I had a meeting with with Amy earlier today, actually. She did mention to me that kindergarten and first grade actually get twenty minutes and twenty minutes. Is that not twenty minutes for lunch and twenty minutes for recess? Is that, is that not true?
I think that that was a shift that had happened recently in order to try to respond to the PTO's concerns.
Okay.
Or it may be that the issue was transition?
From the beginning of the year. And then grades two and up are the ones that have a half hour. Fifteen and fifteen. I did have a conversation with her and I'm I'm certainly open if she has, you know, the, you know, if she's, if she wants to make that change to to go twenty and twenty for the rest of the grades. Definitely open to to hearing how she would do that, where she would shorten the time and whether or not she has the staffing to be able to to support it. So I I will be, you know, reaching out to her and 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 having that conversation. We did just meet, as Ms. Brunel mentioned, and the the school committee is interested in developing some sort of lunch and recess policy. And I did want to also give some history on, you know, during the pandemic. I think in in twenty sixteen, students were in school seven and a half hours a day. And then in twenty eighteen, we shortened that to, I I wasn't the superintendent at the time. Shortened that to seven hours and five minutes a day. And then when I became superintendent in twenty twenty-two, post pandemic, during the, like, when we got back to learning in person, there were some schools that were doing twenty minutes for lunch and recess. So kids were getting ten and ten based on the distance requirements and and the amount of time that like we had to run so many lunch periods because of the CDC guidance around spacing and everything, which which meant that that like lunches had to be really short and those conversations led to our most recent guidance was like, at a minimum, there has to be thirty minutes. So and in twenty twenty-two, we shortened the day from by another twenty minutes. You know, and as part of that communication, we, you know, that it was expressed, like, kids need to be out more. And and that was part of the reason why we shortened the 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 student day three times so far, most recently in twenty twenty-two. And increased the the recess too, like, there was, like I said, there were some schools that were doing a total of ten and ten. So again, we're, I'm open to it, I I want to talk to Amy more, make sure that she want, she's ready to do it. We are working on the the elementary schedule, there's a a group of of team members that will go out to get some feedback. You know, and and then one of the recommendations that I already know they're going to be making is that there be twenty minutes for lunch, twenty minutes for recess as part of that. And that would be a requirement district-wide for next year. But I, they haven't finished their work, you know, they're trying to see like how much time in E L A, how much time in math? And and doing all that work and setting, making sure there's time for advisory and time for lunch and recess. But that that's the the leading recommendation that they're coming with, so I'll be, you know, happy to approve that. And we're going to be, you know, engaging the school committee in conversations, student cabinet. Love to, you know, for the PTO to, I'd love to send the food service team over to the one of your PTO meetings so that you can hear more about the federal food program and, you know, why we serve the meals that we serve and what the challenge is with like the meal requirements and and as part of being a part of that, like, I just did it with our student cabinet and it was a a great experience. We did it with our middle school student cabinet, about fifteen or twenty kids, and we did it with our high school cabinet. Interestingly, like, the the high schoolers were very much like the food has gotten better. And the middle schoolers, especially those that had just came from middle school, like, no, that wasn't my experience. So, you know, the the team is taking all that feedback and saying like, wait a minute, why? Why are the middle schoolers experiencing something different than the high schoolers? I'd love to do a focus group with that with the food service team and Ian White specifically, just to hear from from the kids, like, what do they like on the menu? How could we make improvements and things of that nature? We do it every year, it's not just at Ian White, we've done focus groups across the district. Sometimes I do have to nudge a little bit, like, hey, when was the last time we did a focus group? But I did one personally, two weeks ago or the week before school vacation with our high school cabinet and our middle school cabinet, we got some really good feedback. I think I want to extend that to, especially if you have thirty families that are interested in this topic, I think it would be a good a good topic to cover at one of your PTO meetings. But thank you again.
Dr. Rivera Cologne?
Again, thank you. And I always have that saying of like, a hungry brain doesn't learn, which is true. And I'm a scientist by training, so energy is something that is important to both consume and use. And one of the things that I want to reassure you as parents in our district is that this is not new. That we are working on it, so we just, just before this started, we were talking about having a policy related to recess and lunch. Because oftentimes, we get to hear more about parents from one area than other areas of Holyoke. And I think that everybody deserves to have all their meat, their needs met. And I, as always, a word of caution, always look who's not here, right? Because we, that doesn't mean that there are not other parents or other schools that are experiencing these things, but they may not have the time or the resources to be here and voice their concerns as well. And I'm really always encouraged because our receiver has always been open to listening, to making focus groups, to try to make change in a positive direction. I will also like to say a word of caution that I'm glad that you have that relationship and that you can talk to the principal at Ian White. But this has to be a benefit for everybody. That's why when Ms. Brunel was recommending that we had a district-wide policy, that it's really important that we take care of that because that way is enforced everywhere and that's also really important. And I want to say again, thank you, because if you don't tell us, we don't know, right? We don't, we don't know the day-to-day. But we, not yet, but soon enough, we will have the power to be able to make change. But as of right now, we have a good relationship with the receiver and I think that we should be able to start working towards that. So that I understand all of the challenges, one of the questions that I had at the previous meeting was, what are some of the limitations and the challenges that prevent us from saying, yes, let's do more recess and a longer lunchtime? There are a lot of limitations that are physical, people, et cetera. But how are those creative solutions that we can come up with to still meet the needs of our students, which is very important? And I just think that we're we're going in the right direction. And it's not good enough because it's not going to be fast. And that's not because we want to be slow, but because things take a long time. And right now, one of the things that I know I'm going to say this and regret it later, but one of the things that we can do is make change a little bit faster because we have to convince one person to do the change. That is not always a good thing because that means that only one person is going to be able to make the change. But at this time, with having a listening ear and being able to affect change, this is the time for all parents out there to come out, to be here and to let us know what's happening so that way we can know. And be able to make the change that is going to affect your kids today and not when your kindergarten is in it's in college already, right? Like, we have to be able to be swift, fast and fair, which I know is not an easy feat. But I think that this is the right group of people to bring this up to and we are the ones who can affect that change. So thank you.
Ms. LeFave?
Actually, Dr. Rivera Cologne said exactly because it was going to be hit on equity. When I heard, you know, that it started at Ian White, my whole thing is, well, if it's going to start in one, I'm hoping. Not hoping, it needs to happen right across the board.
Ms. Wilson?
I don't think we're going to need to create a new policy. I think under the school district wellness program, it clearly talks about daily recess. It talks about physical act, physical activity opportunities. Moving to another point you brought up earlier was snacks. It talks about snack time within that policy. So I think it's a matter of reviewing it and seeing if it meets its needs. It also talks about lunchtime, how much time they're given and within what time of day, when possible, lunch should be provided. You know, instead of, you know, because everyone hates that ten o'clock lunch sometimes or ten twenty. But it speaks to all of that within this. So I think it's just reviewing that policy, you know, and making adjustments in order to ensure equity across, you know, all of the district for all of our students regardless of, you know, where, what school they are attending.
Ms. LeFave?
What is the policy?
What number? A D F?
A D F?
A D F, school district wellness program.
Okay, so a motion to refer policy A D F to the policy subcommittee for review?
Second. So Ms. LeFave on the motion, Mr. Collmore on the second, any further discussion? All those in favor to review, have policy, take up the review of our wellness policy?
Aye.
Any oppose? Sorry, I'm a aye as well. Okay, so no further hands, okay, my turn. Okay, so can't thank you guys enough. As a school committee member for as long as I've been here, I almost feel disheartened that more parents and more community members don't come and engage us. You know, when we were talking earlier, Meg, about the students leaving Ian White, and I thought to myself, not one of those parents reached out to me to help address these issues. Not that they probably haven't spoken up at the PTO or whatnot, but this is the key reason why public schools exist and why it's so important that we get out of receivership because a school community is supposed to work for its community. And if we don't hear from the parents, the students and the staff of what's working and not working, then how can we help enact the change that people feel as though is needed? I think one of the biggest downfalls that we've seen as a district recently is the constant change. You know, I fully support redistricting and rezoning, I think for the long term of the district, it's going to be the best thing that we could have done. It comes with some short-term pains and some short-term transitions. So there are some things that maybe went into place this year that we're going to realize are not best practices and hopefully will change for next year. However, you know, for far too long, it was, we're doing this one year, we're doing this the next year, now we're changing to this and now we're doing this. And, you know, with the conversations that happening, and I appreciate that at the district level, you know, working groups work on these things. But to what input of the community, to what input of the school district? Because we didn't have any say when Ian White went to a departmentalized schedule. We didn't have any say when when any of our schools went to having an S L A block in the in the beginning of the day. So we're going to schedule time for social emotional learning rather than just give them more time to be kids. And to your point about your son not enjoying kindergarten, like, we went away from center-based learning, why? Why? We don't give these kids Why? We don't give these kids time to to learn, to to feel, to to create, to decide on their own. Um, two sun- a couple Sundays ago, when there was an article, you know, after the commissioner's letter came out on the second, so it must have been February fourth, which was the Sunday. Above our article was an article about Springfield and how their preschool is getting all these great results already for their district. And I'm like, well, wait a second. How long have we had preschool? So what are they doing that we're not doing? And one of those things is center-based learning. Pre, two, three, they have center-based learning. You know what else they have? They have a music curriculum. Which we don't have here. They have an art curriculum, which we don't have here. So I don't want to hear there's no time for lunch and recess when we have a whole block for intervention. I don't want to hear there's no time to focus on the whole child and teaching to all they need when we're hyper-focused on math and ELA. Because teaching the whole child is not teaching math and ELA and testing these kids so they can pass an MCAS. So many of your points were around chronic absenteeism, which is a state challenge right now, which we've been challenged as a district to find out how. One of the first things I said when we started discussing this, our kids don't enjoy coming to school. I battle it every day with my own seventh grader. Because he had no art and no music and is now getting trombone in a hallway, but we'll, we'll have that conversation at another date. You know, I get told, well, we can't hire art teachers. It's because we don't have a dedicated art program. We don't have a dedicated music program. And if we have music, it's music for fun, not music curriculum. We're not teaching these kids. Music is a key component to helping to have students become critical thinkers, right? So all of these other things that we could be doing for the student will help us get those test score results that we're so striving for. We can't keep making these kids perform like they're eighteen, twenty, twenty-five-year-olds sitting at a desk all day, drilling information in them. So to my next point, screen time. As you said, this, the, the CDC has guidelines for screen time. And it's no more than two hours a day for students between, I think it says six to eighteen. I, let me get back to that particular screen. So students two to five years, no more than one hour per day. Now, five years includes kindergarten. So I want a report on how much screen time our preschool and kindergarteners are getting. And then five to seventeen, it says generally no more than two hours per day. Except for homework, which is kind of silly. So that's screen time, all screen time. We all know our kids come home, they want the iPad, they want the TV, they want some other screen time. Why are we relying on apps to educate our children? I don't understand why. So I, I want more information about that. I want a detailed report on how much screen time on a daily basis, our kids are getting in each school and in each grade. Because to Mr. Kennedy's point, depending on your trade at Dean Technical High School, you need to do a significant of online work, right? You have to, if you're doing graphic design, right? You're working on a computer, that's understandable. But our preschool, our kindergarten, even sixth, seventh, eighth grade, and are we teaching them the safety of being online? You know, I've been looking at the coursework at other districts, mainly because I think we need to have a diversified curriculum for our middle schoolers. We need to be offering advanced coursework. And so I've been looking into the different coursework of other districts and Hampshire Regional, for example, offers a, a social media literacy course that all seventh and eighth graders have to take. It's mandatory. Are we teaching them safety of online? When we're giving them free opportunities to scroll apps, you know, in class and, and again, to some of the points, is there accountability with exactly what they're doing on those apps? So let me see my notes, because I took a bunch. Um. I know when we first discussed this back in October, we focused a lot about the time on learning requirements. Um, I cannot find my notes, which is driving me insane um from that meeting. But we focus a lot about the time on learning and how many hours per day and per school year that the student is supposed to have actual it um learning happening, like direct curriculum and it, we're exceeding that as a district. By a whole hour, I think we discussed, Meg. So there is time to have a little bit less instructional time to be able to add in the time that children need to be able to develop all of those skills to be prepared to be able to be better learners. So that's my points. I'll allow like three more comments and then we're gonna move on um because it's been an hour. Uh, Ms. Wilson?
So I just want to go back and clarify something. Um, you know, I, I did have the pleasure of working in this district. I was an elementary school teacher. Um, during my time here, I saw a significant shift. It was not mandated by our city. It was not mandated by our state. It was that wonderful curriculum that was put in, that we all love, the Common Core. Um, you know, with that, I saw the move from students beginning to learn to read in first grade. And I'm gonna use a word on purpose now, being shoved down to kindergarten schools. Um, kid- I'm sorry, to kindergarten grades. Um, and that's because there was some you know, there were studies done and students are now more prepared because they're going to preschool or going to this. And so with all of that, there was a shift. So students would used to have to be level C. Um, you know, when you graduated, when you move out of kindergarten. You know, now, and that was like being able to like sight words. They knew how to hold a book. They knew how to turn the page. They could identify, you know, and scan things. Now we're talking about, they're basically being, you know, a, a, a high-level learner as far as reading goes in kindergarten. I mean, we're talking about first grade was the most significant level of reading in schools at that time. You had to go through, I think it was like eight levels of reading was the expectation in first grade. Now they've pushed it down to kindergarten. So now we, what we've done is we had non-educators developing a curriculum for the entire United States who didn't take into account students, um, you know, their, their learning. What they were able to do cognitively, what they were able to do physically. They have students doing writing and dexterity things that their bones are, and their joints are not formed and able to do. So this is not just a Holyoke issue. I, I, I do need to bring that forward. That this is a state, this is a Holyoke state country issue based on this joyous common core. Which had some benefits. It was the right idea, but how they did it was wrong. You know, I do believe that, you know, playtime is important in kindergarten because that is the social skills. That is time for, you know, students are able to play, get to know each other, learn how to communicate, you know, effectively. You know, but I do also, you know, want to share that again. I also was a teacher who we had, you know, when I was in my reading graph group with my kids, there were centers. Each kid would go around and do your different centers and this was with spelling, this one was math, this one was all these different things. But they worked collectively within their group. As they moved through each center, again, that was a time for collaboration, working together, not on a computer by themselves, working on a program where I, where we can gauge how much they've grown. You could, you can gauge that by the work they're doing. So, you know, some of these things may have shifted with the joy of having this access to computers. And it's, it's easier to take data because we're a dr- data-driven society in education now. You know, we need that data for everything we do and it's easier just to pull it off a computer than to sit there and have to go and evaluate it. But, you know, I firmly believe in that quality playtime, quality interactive time in order for students to learn how to work to- together, collaborate, have disagreements and learn how, like, it's okay, we can still go and play at recess. Even though we had a disagreement on, you know, what color for my rainbow color words, you know, all those different things. So, you know, that's what I just, I just had to add that, you know, some of this is not a Holyoke-based issue. Some of it is based upon the expectations that we as a society now are putting on our children instead of allowing them to be children. We are forcing them into an educational paradigm that they are not able to achieve. And most are typically not successful, which then leads them to not enjoying school, hating to go to school and not becoming the creative, energetic leaders of tomorrow.
Mr. Kennedy?
Um, Ms. Brunel, to your point of not, you know, like it's really hard to get parents and teachers to come forward with this. It's really hard for, in my opinion, it's really hard for like parents, teachers and even students to know that they can come forward. I'm here on the Holyoke Public Schools uh Media Center. And like the school committee meetings, twenty-three views, the month before that, seventeen views, the month before that, fifty-two views. Um, so it's really hard for them to feel like they have a voice. Something that I will say is that I think that Superintendent Soto does a very good job giving the students and teachers a voice. The problem is students from a very, very young age are taught to recognize authority. And like when authority comes into their classroom, it's really hard for them to speak. Very few students are as unfiltered with authority as I am, right? So when like, for example, the receiver comes in, like, they know very important person, authority. Maybe I, it's hard for me to put my thoughts forward. Um, so I think that as a school committee, that's your steps should be to, and I know it's very hard because everyone has like daytime jobs, but is to go in with, you know, people and like, talk to the students yourself, talk to the teachers yourself. Publicize it more because, and like even like, I, I can't even find this meeting, like I've looked, I can't even find this meeting live. So it's really hard for people to view the meeting. It's very hard to, for people to know that they have a voice. So I think that that is a good next step is to let people know that.
I really appreciate that, Mr. Kennedy, and that's super important because if you go on a Holyoke s- city website, school committee is not even listed there. They weren't for a long time. Maybe we finally are now, but it had city council and then for school committee, it linked you out to the school department's website. And I know, I mean, we're elected by the voters of the city of Holyoke, so our information should be everywhere. Um, did you have something else you wanted to add to the conversation before we move on?
Actually, uh, yes. Um, first off, thank you. Yes, all of you. Um, I, I wanted to speak to Ellie's point. Um, data collection is one thing, but making positive changes uh based on that data is a separate thing. Uh, we can have all the data in the world slapping us in the face. We're not making positive changes off it. We're doing a disservice to everyone. Um, I also wanted to mention, I, I, I did speak earlier, I am a member of the MTA. I am speaking here as an individual and not on behalf of the MTA by any means. Um, but in January, we had a very productive meeting with the Education Secretary. Um, and these issues are not unique to Holyoke in the sense that, I mean, they've always, it, they've always existed in Holyoke. But I think uh, uh, post-COVID, they're starting to manifest a lot more. And I think more I think more affluent communities are starting to recognize it finally, so yay. Um, but there was, um, the MTA put out a, a document, uh, and Council Brunel and, and Dr. Soto, I, I mentioned this to you at the last PTO. Okay. Oh, my apologies. Okay, can you hear me now? Great. Yeah, it's the first time I've ever heard that. Sorry. Um, so, uh, to the point, we, we had a discussion. Um, the MTA had a, a positive discussion with um, with the Education Secretary. And um, these issues are, are, are definitely popping up across the Commonwealth. Um, and there was a document titled Classroom Solutions to the Mental Health Crisis in Our Schools. Um, I mentioned this at the last PTO meeting that you attended, Dr. Soto and Council Brunel. Um, you know, the, these are recommendations that teachers across the state are, are making. Um, and yes, uh, Classroom Solutions to the Mental Health Crisis in Our Schools. If you, just do a quick Google search. It's, it's um, it's a twenty-something page document. It's not exactly light reading, but um, a lot of these, a, a lot of these recommendations that we've made here tonight are basically stemming off of these same, these same uh, solutions that are recommended. So we're all kind of pointing to the same solutions here. Um, so i- it might be worth it to, 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 to take a look at that document and, and and take a good look at what we're doing as well, so.
Thank you so much. I think it's important to note too that, you know, Massachusetts is a leader in education. So if we want to see things change, we have to advocate for them. Like the Thrive Act that's currently in front of the Education Committee in, in the um slate legislature. They also just approved something that gives uh the state autonomy to pick um early uh, early literature curriculum. Is that something we really want happening, right? Does that take away from public say on how districts are run? So, you know, Nordic countries, they don't even start school till the age of seven and they like lead the globe in education. They're not focused on testing all day. So, you know, I think it's so important that we look at that data and we do the research and really think about what are how are we spending our day and how is it benefiting our students? Because the steady decline in MCAS scores here, clearly what we're doing is not working. So we gotta do something else. Um, so on those points, I'd like to entertain a motion that we request from the rece- I, we see, we don't like file orders here, so I don't even know that this is necessary, but I'd like to request from the receiver that we get a detailed report on screen time um for all grade levels uh through the district.
Motion. I'd like to put in addendum.
Do we need to do a motion first, right? And then in discussion, you can amend it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Sorry. So do I have a motion? Okay, do I have a second? Thank you. So that was Dr. Cabadieto on the motion. And Mr. Willahan on the second. I'm just repeating it all because our note takers online. And then in discussion, Ms. LeFave.
The addendum would also be to um include the meal time for all of the schools. And by grade level. I mean, obviously, if, if it's kinder to second is this time, I don't want kinder then first. It could be in blocks, but at least all schools, all grade levels.
Okay, so on the amendment to the motion, so the amendment is to include lunch and recess times in the report from the district that is also gonna include screen times. So on the amendment, I need a, a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? So first, we're voting on the amendment, which is to add in the lunch and recess times to the report. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Okay, so now the original motion is amended. So we are asking the receiver for a report that details by grade level in school. Our screen, how much time students are spending on screens and how much time students are getting for lunch and recess across the district. So on the motion. Right? So I already took a second, so that's good. So any further discussion? I see Ms. Wilson.
So I would like to, um, another point that was brought up that I think we should find information on is snack time. Um, as to is, is it built into a scheduled, do, is it based on teacher approval? Um, kind of situation, I would like to find that out as well.
Okay, so are you offering an amendment to the motion?
Yes, I am.
You said meals, that would encompass. She had stepped out to the restroom, so for clarity purposes.
Meals, meals.
No, I thought I said meals and snacks.
I'm sorry, but it's when I just heard the motion, it was not snacks.
That's probably my fault. Okay, so the motion on the floor is to request from the receiver a detailed report on all grade levels through the district. By school as well, what our current lunch, recess and snack policies are. How much time students are spending on apps and if there's any guidelines at the district level to, to do that. We've already referred wellness, so we'll review that as well. Um, so on that motion, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Hearing none, the motion carries. Um, thank you all again for coming this evening. I would encourage you to check back in with us. Um, we are meeting more regularly now to, mainly to help address more constituent issues and to hear from the people on the ground and and to ensure that it doesn't take four, five, six months for issues to process through us anymore. Um, so thank you so much for your time. Um, we all can say we have open door policy. It, it's, it's one of the things we agree to when we take on these positions is to respond to our constituents, so um, for the record, if anybody needs our contact information, you can find it on Hoyle Public Schools. You click on the school committee tab and all of our phone numbers and email addresses are public. Um, so thank you all again. We appreciate you wholeheartedly. All right, folks, moving along. We're gonna jump back up to vice chair reports. Um, general receiverships discussions and uh letter to the commissioner. So, um, updates that have happened since our last meeting, lots has happened. As we all know, the current commissioner has submitted his letter of resignation. Um, tomorrow, Desi is voting to appoint an interim. Um, so we'll see what happens there. Um, the mayor and I The mayor and I met with city leaders, city leaders from Southbridge along with our city council president, Tessa Murphy-Rombeletti, to kind of discuss with them their viewpoints and how they're seeing everything progressing with the state. They're, they're not at the same position as us. They haven't petitioned or anything yet, but they asked for a meeting, so we were more than happy to meet with them. And then Mayor Garcia had a really good conversation with Secretary Tutwiler yesterday as well, or actually, that was this morning, this morning as well. So as a body, we need to decide if we would want to formally appeal the commissioner's decision. It can be viewed as an adverse decision because he didn't make a decision. The law states that we have 30 days to appeal, which puts us at March 2nd. So I wanted to bring that up for discussion tonight so that we could have a healthy discussion around that. And then to decide if folks still felt like we wanted to formalize a formal response to the commissioner. I have some thoughts and feelings, but I will save my thoughts and feelings for the end. So yeah, does anybody have anything that they want to discuss or add to where we are with the process? Or questions, concerns? You know, how do people feel about the potential of appealing? What does appealing mean? And so on and so forth. So feel free to ask away or have any comments. Mayor Garcia.
Um, excuse me. So on the, well, just, just the, Erin mentioned about sending, we're working on a letter that we're gonna send as a body. They were gonna approve, but Erin and I did send a letter out of the mayor's office, very generic, broad response of an update, but the, the department or the commissioner's office does know that the school board is still working on a much more, a much more expanded response that they might get, assuming you guys move forward with that anyways. As for the, the petitioning part, yeah, and obviously, we're gonna do whatever the, the body wants to do together. It's something that I'm gonna be voting against tonight, not because I don't want to, but because just conversations I've had with Tutwiler and, and Russ, who's, I think, was, was that appointment tonight?
It's tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow.
Don't forget you're on for public comment.
Tomorrow, I'm on for public comments? I can put that on my calendar. And it's just, it's, I know we've had a lot of what we felt like reassuring conversations, but I can tell you that the, the, the stars are aligning in, in a positive direction. And so by, we can always resub, whether we submit our, our, what are we calling it? An appeal or not, we can always petition again. So my only fear is that you got the administration, as far as to even the governor's administration that is behind Hoyoke in this process, you submit that now we're kind of putting their hard work to the side and going straight to the board and we don't know where that board, individual members stand. It's just too, it doesn't make me feel good about, you know, it's the same board that put us here to, to begin with. And, and there isn't a lot of, it's hard to tell the temperature between members on where their positions stand when it comes to districts and receivership overall. So my feeling is that we hold off, even if the thing expires, it's okay. We can submit another petition and start the process again. And, you know, we kind of go in that direction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Dr. Caballero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to know in a nutshell what the conversations revolved around this morning between you and the other person.
So Commissioner Tutwiler called me this morning. Secretary Tutwiler, apologies. To assure me, because, you know, obviously, when we hear interim, generally, you feel like it's a, it's a, an appointment to, you know, hold down the fort, right? And they don't make any big decisions. And so he wasn't sure what I thought or what any of us thought or felt when we heard the word interim. So he did call just to kind of let me know and remind me that, again, the governor is behind this and that the interim role, he's not, you know, when, if and when he does get appointed tomorrow as the interim, his key task is gonna be to continue to partner with Hoyoke and establish that timeline, that path with, you know, that document we're looking for that has hardcore metrics and what we gotta do to get out of local control. So I did tell him that the board tonight was going to have a discussion and vote to whether or not we want to appeal. There isn't any real major impact one way or another, except that it's just, you got the administration in full support and is pushing for this. You know, I guess it comes down to whether or not we want to, you know, trust this process and, and let the administration do what she's trying to do.
Ms. Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor.
So first, I'd like to see a copy of the letter that was sent. I would love to see what you both sent. Second, you know, I'm always a person that I need time to think about things. So I feel as though, knowing now that we'd have to make a decision today in order to submit an appeal is not appropriate. We should have been notified prior to this meeting that a decision such as this would have had to be made by this meeting because our next meeting's gonna be after that appeal date. I feel that having more information is better for me to make appropriate decisions because my gut would be, you know, you feel good about it, that's great. Well, we felt good about it before and look where we are now. We have got no positive motion, even though we've come to this group before saying there's positive. Oh, the governor's looking for it. Oh, this is great. And oh, someone said that his goal is going to be to establish the path forward for Hoyoke. That's all in good being said in conversations that are not public, that are not being held, no one's being held accountable for. So, you know, so right now, I feel like I am pigeonholed because I was not given time to really consider a vote, such as, am I going, am I going, gonna have the appeal now? Or do I listen to the good work that's being done behind the scenes and trust it? Because I felt as though there, there was good work behind the scenes before and that got us a no decision. So I, I just feel like I'm being pigeonholed tonight and I would hope going forward, I would not feel this way in the future that I'd be given more information if I'm gonna be asked to, to vote on something when it, there was no detail as to, you know, that there was a deadline for the appeal. That's all I'm saying.
So as far as the timeline for the appeal goes, I myself found out last week when Mildred researched the law a little bit more for us. And the timeline is not ours to establish, it's the state. So while we have a meeting tonight, if we needed to, we could certainly always schedule an emergency meeting for further discussion. But the state timeline, the law, the timeline of the law is, is what it is. So when I found out, I added it to the agenda. That being said, did you want to make a comment, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think that, thank you, Erin, for clar, that's exactly what happened. But I, I think it's a very fair concern. I'm not, you know, I'd be, I'm frustrated too. And also, you know, although we're all frustrated on the response of the commissioner, where we are today, the process that this body has been taking, we're in a good place. The letter, the response was not a no. But that was, even though to your point, we need more than that, right? I was all frustrated, everybody knows where my frustration stood. And the commissioner resigned. Now, that's in the air and so the real reasons why, one way or, I, I don't know. My feeling is this was part of it. And there are further discussions, there's limitations that are happening at the state level that they're trying to figure. This hasn't been, been done before. We're kind of paving the way, Hoyoke's paving the way. I, I, I don't, I, I don't want to, I guess I'm in the opinion of thinking that I'm not, I don't think that we're in a bad spot right now. I think everything that's been done to date, even the way that, that those, the decision was made, we're, we're, this, this, this is the process coming to fruition in my mind. But to Erin's point, we can, if, if people don't want to vote tonight and want to continue thinking about it and have more conversations, when is, when is the deadline again? The, the last day?
So it's technically 30 days from the decision, which would be Saturday.
This Saturday?
So it'd be Monday. But I guess, so I'm just gonna come back and, but I guess my point is, discussion of next steps does not encompass us voting on an appeal, in my mind.
I can double check my email, but I'm pretty sure I mentioned it in the email.
Uh, but on the agenda, it says discussion of next steps.
Oh, okay.
So the public doesn't know that there was an appeal, that we could have had an appeal? No one, you know, you knew a week ago? It's not on here listed, discussion of next steps on is, is not clearly delineated.
Fair enough. Mr. Willahan?
Thank you. Yeah, just to kind of follow up on what the mayor said, just, you know, Dr. Riley, you know, he didn't say yes, he didn't say no either. You know, so my take on it, you know, I'm not sure what we're appealing, he didn't make a decision. That's just my non-legal mind working, okay? What are, what are we really appealing? I'd rather go through, I'm gonna call out the motions, call out the motions, but just to meet with, you know, the interim commissioner, hopefully it's Mr. Johnson, we've met before, he's from Western Mass, you know, and just to, just to get his feedback on where we stand. You know, he might have a different take than what Mr. Riley has. You know, so in terms of appealing it, I don't, where's that gonna go? It's gonna bypass Mr. Johnson, in my opinion. So I'd rather, you know, just take a step back. As the mayor said, we can always come back later and, and file another appeal with the commissioner at that time. Hopefully, it's Mr. Johnson.
Grab my list here. Evan, Mr. Kennedy?
Um, I think that Ms. Wilson said this, but I don't think that we should really, well, obviously, not me, I don't have a vote, but the people who do have a vote, I don't think that we should be making decisions based on how it looks in our eyes, what we're thinking, because both the chair, the vice chair, and someone from DESI, before the decision was made, said that we had, it looked like we would be exiting receivership, right? They, we thought the decision would be exiting receivership. That was the feeling that was had. And it went the, well, no, I wouldn't say complete opposite way. It went the other way. We are not exiting, we have no path, clear pathway to exit receivership right now. So I think that we should, not we, you, the committee member, sorry. The committee member should act.
I mean, you're a member, so you can say we.
Should act in like factual, not opinion. Sorry, that, that's just my point of view.
So just for point of order, for clarity, on February 16th, I sent out an email mentioning that we had till March 2nd to appeal if we so choose. And also mentioning that the mayor and I had invited the commissioner and the interim commissioner to attend tonight's meeting. So I just want to put that out there. Who is next? Mr. Collmore?
So much condition right now to say to the incoming commissioner, we have to sit down and talk. And that's, that's the first issue. Let's sit down and if, if at that point, they don't want to talk, then we can go farther. But I think at that, at the time last meeting, we, we just weren't ready to slam someone over some different statements that were made. So I think we're, we are doing the right thing by listening to all our people here in Hoyoke saying, let's not send a harsh letter like that. So I think we're in a good condition right now to listen to the new commissioner and move on. Move on. It's, it's all over. Riley is gone and let's find out what the new commissioner is gonna do for us. And we, we can go on. We've, we've been fighting this for five years, even longer. You know, another month of listening, if, if he's gonna come and listen to us or not, not only listen to us, I still want to find out what they want us to do to improve our, our schools, which has never happened. It might have gone to the receiver or someone else, but it never came to us what our courses need to be improved and improved, but no reason why we should do it. Look at our records. Look at what we've done in the last four or five years to increase, Dr. Soto himself, to increase absenteeism, to increase all these things that are, were happening quite a while ago, cooperation and working together to get things done. So I'm very happy that we tabled that last meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Collmore. Mildred? I'm sorry, Ms. LaFave?
Okay. Let's all go by first name.
I'd say we could vote to be more informal, but I'm really trying.
Dr. Yadilet. Um, I'm curious as to the discussion you guys had with Southbridge. But at the same time concerned, because only two people, if I'm not mistaken, came from Southbridge. And that would be the town manager and the town council president, both of which were former school committee members, but yet did not have the chair of the school committee there. That is concerning and it's disheartening because just as we felt here, that at times, school committee is not even looked at, right? Kind of pushed to the side, but yet we're the ones that have to deal with the education piece at the end of the day. So curious to see where that conversation went and what sort of strategic plan might come of this. Now, in regards to benchmarks, right? As to how do we get out of receivership? It's, it's based on the turnaround plan, but here's my thing. And I think this is where we have to be actively involved when it comes to setting up these benchmarks for any district coming out of receivership. So when you go into receivership, technically, the school committee loses all powers in voting towards the schools, right? But you still own yourself as a school committee, because you are elected by the people. So you still have your responsibility and you have to do your due diligence to perform your duties. So your duties now go into that of a watchdog. But whatever happens in regards to the successes or non-successes of the students based on curriculum, what's chosen, whether they're passing MCAS, whether they're not, in my personal opinion, not be reflective of the school committee performance. Because although we may have a good relationship, and, and I will say, and I've, and I've spoken with Lawrence and I've spoken with Southbridge, I still do not understand or comprehend how we have three districts in receivership, similar populations, but the school committees, each one is involved differently. Functioning, functioning because it's pre- functioning because it's prevented, and I'm not understanding that part. And my conversations are, it should not be, because again, we are responsible to respond back to the individuals who put us into these seats, which is the community and the voters, right, and our residents. So with that being said, the benchmarks that should be put into any sort of plan to come out of receivership should be based on how a school committee is functioning. So if in your plan, if in your turnaround plan, we're talking about, um, community engagement and outreach, right? And let's put chronic absenteeism, then the school committee should be working with agencies in the community, developing or creating some sort of partnership, and I know that Ed Case has a networking event every month, um, and then coming back with the receiver and saying, these may be partnerships that will improve some aspect of something that's in the turnaround plan. So it's an evaluation of the school committee's performance towards that. But if we're looking specifically at MCAS scores and specific things as to curriculum and the staffing or things, those are things we, finance, those are things that we have no say in. Now, talk to me about policies, if we're looking at our policies and we're setting up our own goals and our own benchmarks, that's being active in your role as school committee. That's where we should be evaluated. But I'm concerned that this whole benchmark of whatever's created at the state level is going to be reflective of our student performance, which, in my personal opinion, should never be, because at the end of the day, we do not have a say in that. You may hear our opinion, but I can tell you what opinions are like, but that would be inappropriate right about now, and it does nothing, right? Because if the, the receiver chooses not to take our recommendation and goes with something different that fails, it's funny, the state will still point and say the school committee's not doing their job to make sure that our students are improving, but if you actually take the recommendation and you move forward with it, and, and it's great and the students are performing and the grades are up, the state's gonna be saying, and you see, and this is why we are here, and we, as the state, did this. You see what I'm saying? So I really think we need to be part of that conversation when it comes to, because who better knows about what we need to do in order to get out of receivership than those who are in receivership? It's just like saying, who knows better than what's happening in his classroom than the one who's in his classroom? That's just, just me.
Thank you so much for all of that. Um, okay, so what was my, gonna be my first point? So I do not think we should appeal, because if we appeal, we need to put together a case, like a, an argument that shows that we've basically met our turnaround plan and therefore have the right to appeal. So like what Mildred is saying, I think the argument needs to be a different argument. Um, so in our conversations with Southbridge, the reason their school committee chair was not present is because according to the town manager, they're not very active. So in our conversation, we came to find out, according to them, that we are leaps and bounds ahead of their school committee in terms of functionality. So he said that their receiver is not, uh, in a cooperating, working relationship with their school committee. So these are the things that need to be discussed with DESI, with the commissioner, with the board, as far as other districts are concerned. The mayor and I also had a meeting with Mike Moyardi, our local representative on DESI, and they have not discussed receiverships of any of the districts in months. So where was Commissioner Riley with actually discussing receivership at his board's meetings, right? That we can't really comment to, because we're not there. They do have a meeting tomorrow. Again, we're not on the agenda, but we're talking about it. Um, so there's that. So one of the things we discussed with Southbridge is Tuesday, tomorrow, a lot changes. We're going to have a new interim super, uh, commissioner, and what's going to happen from there. So he called me himself also, uh, late last week, and I, he called me to say that they couldn't come to our meeting, because their meeting is Tuesday morning, and who would come, right? Like, the commissioner on his last night, or the interim who's not interim yet, kind of situation. So what I said to him is, I respect that, we'll give you a few days to settle, and then the mayor and I will follow up with you at the end of the week to schedule that time. And we will not be having a subquorum meeting, because it's not fair to the members of the school committee that aren't invited. They need to come here for a formal meeting, whether it's in our full body or in our new established subcommittee to start, but that they need to come here, so this, later this week when we speak to them, the goal, the reason we invited them tonight, right, is to try to have that conversation tonight, to help us educate in the decision of whether or not to appeal. Because if we had a fruitful conversation that came out with dedicated timelines, then that would all, maybe make us feel one way or the other, right? So my feeling on this is to allow the interim commissioner to digest the fact that he's now the commissioner, follow up with him at the end of the week, and get a meeting on the schedule. He said to me, I am committed not to exiting receivership, let's not mince words, he's committed to sitting down with us to help establish the timeline and the guidelines of working with us towards that goal, okay? Which is a transition, which is all really we've been asking for. I also want to make a point of clarity, whether we appeal or not, whether we, time lapses, so let's say hypothetically speaking, we decide to appeal, that appeal has to be heard within 90 days, I believe, don't quote me, I have to check the law again. But let's say we appeal and they say no, we could come back to our very next school committee meeting and vote to petition all over again, okay, you guys? So just because we act or don't act now, doesn't mean we can't act again in the future. So my feeling is to, you know, I, I, I like the idea of a Mr. Johnson as the commissioner, because he's a Western Mass guy. He's not from the other end of the state. He was superintendent in West Springfield, right? Like, he has ties to Western Mass, so maybe having a gentleman in leadership who actually cares about the Pioneer Valley will help us as the Pioneer Valley. In the conversations I had with him, I think there's a lot of realizations in the fact that we are, as a body, not as a Holyoke Public Schools, but as a body and as a governance of the city of Holyoke, more prepared than potentially some of the other districts that are in receivership. We've gone through the trainings, we're putting in the work, we've always worked well with our receivers, we've always had our meetings, and everything's been going fairly well as far as like us as a body and our governance function. I mean, of, of course, there's always room for improvement, right? But that's, that's being human. If you don't have room for improvement, then who are you as a person? So keeping all that in mind, again, I can't control the timeframes of what they are, so I'd like to have discussion with y'all, i-if, if we want to appeal or not, somebody can make the motion to do so. Um, we can just sit tight and see what happens as things change with the new commissioner being intermed tomorrow, um, and then at our next meeting, we could take more, like, our, our deadline to appeal will be expanded, or expired, sorry. So one of the things I want to say to the, to the new commissioner is, when we do talk, okay, so our decision was deferred, when will we have a formal decision, right? So we need to start format, formal, formalizing, God, you guys, I can't talk tonight, formalizing the process. And if we don't get the responses from him that we want, we can petition again, okay? So I just want to point that out, that even though we feel like we're in a box, there's cracks to the box, and, you know, the box can be reopened again, even though it's been closed. Um, so that being said, the previous letter that we had drafted was tabled, so that letter was not submitted. I don't know if the body feels like we want to submit a letter now. I don't know if we want to wait and see what kind of communications we get from him moving forward. Um, you know, if we submit a letter now, what exactly do we want it to say? Um, and that's something that we can sit here and have thoughtful discussion on, or we can refer it to the receivership slash local control subcommittee for more further detailed conversation. It's totally up to the body, I'll entertain any motions that anybody wants to move forward, but that concludes what I had to say on the subject. Mr. Collmore?
First thing I want to say, you made a statement there, that it could be the body or just a, a few members. Let's get this straight, in my opinion, get this really straight. We all made with him, not, not like they did before, pick, pick two or three people and talk with them and.
I, I agree, that wasn't a formal meeting. However, if he was invited to a subcommittee meeting, that would be formal? But again, it's whatever the body chooses, we'll, we'll do our best to invite him to the full committee, or, like I said, if it's the choice of the body, you can invite him to the subcommittee. But I agree with you, the previous meetings were purposely asked to be subquorum and not public. So this next meeting, initial meetings, meetings moving forward, need to be formalized on the record, public, you know, with the, the body. So the intention will be for him to come to a full meeting. And if you would like to make a motion to make that formally the intention, you're welcome to do so.
Well, I really would make that motion, that it be with the full body, but I think it should be just to discuss receivership, and it shouldn't be at a public, a public meeting where we're gonna do other things on the agenda.
A special meeting?
It should be just for that, this purpose of talking about receivership.
So one of the reasons why we went to the two-month new schedule is to allow us to have more flexibility with our agendas. So in theory, how these, the receivers see things moving forward, is one of the meetings a month, he'll do his superintendent report and all his presentations, as you'll notice, there's none of that on tonight's meeting, right? So in March, we can dedicate one of our meetings towards just that. We wouldn't necessarily need to call a special meeting, but we can, um, or we just dedicate one of our, so not the, not the first meeting in March, not March 12th, um, but the second meeting in March can be dedicated just towards that, and that can be the meeting that we invite him to. I was close. So what's the second date? I mean, or it can be March 11th, if he can accommodate, if you guys want, I could, because we can move the superintendent reports to the later in the month meeting, right? It's up to us, we create the agenda, myself, so, um, we will, okay, so I'm hearing a motion to formally invite the new interim, uh, commissioner to attend one of our March meetings based on his schedule, so please let us know. So we will present the formal invitation on Thursday, and we'll request a response by Monday. Does that sound good, Mr. Collmore? I like timeframes.
It sounds very good, but, uh, I think we ought to give the new commissioner time to evaluate our feelings.
Yeah.
To it.
Well, he's already expect-
Not rush into this thing by, by next Tuesday, you know?
Well, no, but he is already expecting communication from us from the end of the week, so I'd like for him to commit to coming to a meeting, so. So.
The sooner the better, but at least give the new commissioner a chance to work.
So do you want to make it a formal motion?
No.
No. Okay. Ms. LeFave?
With all due respect, Mr. Collmore, but missile, Mr. Russell Johnston has been one of the participants in all four previous meetings of the subquorum.
Oh, yes.
That the commissioner did not want public, because again, we never formally asked to come out of receivership, it was what was the process, so that we can start moving and looking towards getting out of receivership. So the new interim commissioner is very well aware, and he was also one of the ones when we were taken over, who is already here. So he knows fully well how we've been doing, and I think March is not too soon.
Just for a point of clarity, the most recent meeting came after the formal petition. Just for, the most recent meeting with the commissioner himself came after the formal petition, so just for a point of clarity. But I would beg to say that Mr. Johnson knows more about what's going on in Holyoke than the commissioner, because he's the one who comes out for the visits, he's your direct connection, direct contact, so, um, did I see your hand as well, Dr. Cologne, Rivera Cologne? I think I saw, okay, no, then it was Ms. Wilson next.
So I, I was just looking at the calendar, and it does appear that March 11th is the first night of Ramadan.
No, we made an alteration, hold on.
So because, but I was looking, and it doesn't seem as though there's any.
That's why I said the 12th.
Okay, I'm just.
So at our last meeting, when we went over the schedule, you mentioned that, and it was changed. So later in the agenda, we're formalizing that schedule that we all approved. Um, and it is absolutely the 12th, because we moved it. Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay. Yeah, it's a Tuesday.
Yes.
And then, so the following one would be two, the second Monday from that.
Right.
Okay. Mr. Collmore?
Could you, uh, read off what the motion is that we're gonna vote on?
Well, there isn't a formal motion on the floor. I asked you if you wanted it to be a motion, and you said no.
I want, I want a motion.
Okay.
I want a motion.
So you're well-
Pertaining to, uh.
Communication with the commissioner. Okay.
That all, all of us attend.
Okay, so Mr. Collmore would like to formally motion that communication is set forth with the new interim commissioner, uh, by myself and Mayor Garcia, and he is invited to attend a formal session of the whole school committee meeting at one of our meetings in March, based on his schedule. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Collmore. Um, I was just gonna also maybe say, like, should it also go to subcommittee, because like, we need to, but I guess not, so, okay. Okay, thank you all. So attached to the same discussion was the actual letter, so I guess I would like to entertain a motion to move that to the subcommittee, because by the time they meet, maybe we'll have met with the commissioner, and then we'll be able to formalize. I don't know, you guys, give me some leadership on this. Do you want to send a letter in a, a formal response? Do we not want to? Do we need to have more conversation about a, what a letter would have? I, I want to hear from you all, I don't want to like advocate that towards what's decision we make. Um, I saw Jay's hand first, and then Ellie, and then Gloria, and then Ronnie.
I'd like to entertain a motion to table any letter to the commissioner until after we meet with them.
Would you like to table it, or move it to the subcommittee of receivership slash local control? I would suggest the latter, but it's your motion.
Table it to the subcommittee.
Refer it to the subcommittee. Okay. Any discussion on Mr. Willihan's motion?
Oh, I need a second, I apologize, thank you.
Second.
Uh, so Mr. Willihan with the motion, that was Ms. Wilson with the second. Any further discussion? Mr. Collmore?
I just think, in my opinion, forget the letter. Scratch it, put it in a wastebasket, whatever you want to do, get rid of it, and let's start working together with everyone, and let, let the state do their job.
Thank you, Mr. Collmore.
They're gonna work with us. We, we can take all those negative, let's forget negativism in our schools, we don't need it. Just get rid of it and go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Collmore. Okay, folks, on the motion, all those in favor for referring the idea of a letter to the subcommittee for receivership slash local control, and if I see a, a- And if I see a split decision, I'll do a roll call, so it's more formal. Okay, you guys? So all those in favor? I hear three. So the motion was made by Mr. Willihan to refer to the joint, to the subcommittee for receivership slash local control. The letter that was in response drafted to be a formal response from the Holyoke School Committee to the commissioner in response to his February 2nd discussion. At the last meeting, it was tabled to tonight because people wanted to amend the letter. So now the motion is to send that letter to the subcommittee. Paul is the subcommittee for receivership slash local control for further review and discussion. On the motion, I'm going to do a roll call. Mayor Garcia? So a yes is in favor, a no?
William Collmore, throw me a curve ball there. I love his energy. I'm going to vote no.
Okay. I'm going to wait till the end. Ms. LaFave?
No.
Ms., Dr. Rivera Cologne?
No.
Dr. Cabaniero?
No.
Mr. Willihan?
No.
Mr. Collmore?
No.
Ms. Wilson?
No.
I'm going to actually vote yes, only because I just like to keep conversations going, but that's okay. So thank you all. The motion fails. Moving on.
What do we want to do with the letter?
It's, it's gone. It's gone into abyss. We're not sending one at this time.
May I have, may I ask a question?
You may. Thank you.
So I don't know. Please educate me, everybody. Shouldn't there be on the record that something was at least written in response to what happened to the letter that we received from the previous commissioner? I don't know, just to keep it on the record?
So
Just eliminating it or, I don't know.
So our minutes are very limited. But if you want your full statement to be reflected on the record, you just say so when you're making your statement. So the, the letter was included in our agenda at our last meeting. So our drafted letter is, is out there in the internet. And then it was tabled, which is reflected in the minutes. And then it was again on the agenda tonight. So it can be found in many places as somebody was looking for it. But if you'd like to formalize it more in some way, you're welcome, we're welcome to try to figure out how to do so. But it's already formally in the record. It's just failed. Ms. Wilson?
I would like to make a motion that the subcommittee send a letter to the interim commissioner. You know, letting them know how much we're looking forward to collaborating and working in establishing a process to end receivership.
So you're looking to make a motion to refer a letter to the subcommittee, but
Just to say, you know, to welcome them and to let them know, as in the last paragraph to, you know, that was alluding to that last paragraph from the commissioner's letter about establishing a path out, saying that we are willing to work with the new interim in establishing the path forward. So a positive letter rather than a condemnation over the no decision.
So I'm hearing a motion that the subcommittee for receivership slash local control work on a communicate, work on drafting a communication to the interim superintendent. It can be that vague. Interim commissioner, what did I say? Super, I'm sorry. So on the motion, any further discussion?
There's a question.
Mayor Garcia.
So it'll go to committee. Committee's going to talk, draft something, bring it back to the body for approval?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Um, no, sorry. Thank you, Dr. Yadiela Rivera Cologne. I need a second on the motion if somebody wishes to. You did? Okay, thank you, Mr. Collmore. Just make sure that microphone's on so I can hear you. So the motion was seconded by Mr. Collmore. Is there any further discussion? Ms. LaFave?
So I just want to remind everyone, although they may be appointing tomorrow, maybe Associate Commissioner Russell Johnston. The current commissioner is still there, I believe, till March 14th or the 15th, somewhere in that timeframe. So by the subcommittee working on it, you can bring it to the second March meeting. So that way it's then, you know, targeted towards the interim commissioner versus wondering, do I send it to both?
Right.
You know, just out of respect, he'll still be there, you know, during that transition time.
Okay. Microphone. It's okay. Go ahead, Mr. Collmore.
I was under the impression, you people talking, that the commissioner resigned already.
He's, he's submitted his letter of resignation that's effective as of March 16th.
On 16th. So I think could be, and I'm not questioning what his thoughts are. He could between now and the 16th give us, take away the receivership.
I highly doubt that, but why would he defer and then not? I would say that's highly unlikely, but yes, in theory, sure. You know, in theory. Okay, any further discussion? Dr. Rivera Cologne?
I just think that it would be a better informed letter if we have that communication after we meet. So that way the letter is actually, has some substance. Because then we can hold the person accountable to, this were the things that we discussed. And then we can move forward and that would be public. That's my
Okay, order, folks. Okay. Listen. Okay, so what letter did you never read? The one that was on the agenda two weeks ago? I mean, it was in the packet. Ms. LaFave?
So just to clarify, so what Dr. Rivera Cologne's talking about right now is once Associate Commissioner, whomever it becomes, comes to the meeting and we have that discussion about the steps moving forward. It's then the subcommittee working at creating a draft letter that will kind of say, you know, it was great meeting with you and having the discussion as part of our discussion. We talked about this thing, this item, this item, this item. And we look forward to continuing, moving in the path forward. That type of letter is so, there's no letter right now. It's more so waiting until that day that he comes. So then it's a response to the visit. We'll say it that way. Response to the visit.
So are you amending the motion? Okay, hold on, guys, guys. Okay, for clarity purposes, Ms. Wilson? Can we please restate the intention of the motion?
The intention of the motion was to enter a dialogue with the interim commissioner. To let them know that we are looking forward to working collaboratively to exit receivership. So the intent of my motion goes along with Dr. Rivera Cologne's further expansion of it. Because it was just a letter about collab, collaboratively working together to end receivership. So I think my motion still stands. Because I did not, there was not a general clarification as to the full content.
Yeah.
So.
So, so for the subcommittee to work on establishing a communit, a communication to the powers that be, right? Okay, we're on the same page. Everybody understands the motion. Okay, thank you. On the motion, all those that are in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Okay. For a point of record too, when things are moved to a subcommittee in the minutes, I need that more in, more emphasized. And then the communication needs to get to the chair of the subcommittee, that something was moved to their committee. Okay, thanks. Okay. Uh, moving right along, we're almost done, guys. Okay. Uh, moving into new business. So I was a little taken aback this morning when I watched the school, city council meeting from last Tuesday to find out that we had intentions to apply for accelerated repair projects. So I called the superintendent to discuss that. He acknowledged and apologized for the lack of communication to us beforehand. It, the deadline came up very quickly. As we all know, last year, the MSBA did not allow any accelerated repairs because they were catching up on financing. So this year, they're only allowing it in three categories. So the communication came up rather quickly. So I applaud the receiver for working towards this and, and meeting that deadline. But just reminded that we need the communication as well. So city council voted to, so city council has a vote to just approve the application process. So it's my understanding that we have planned to apply to do roof repairs on five schools. We currently have a boiler project happening here at Dean. They weren't accepting boilers into the bid process this year. It's just windows, roofs and doors. If I'm missing anything, Mr. Soto, feel free to jump in.
Yeah, we're, we got the last SO, in the last SOA round, we're, we were doing windows at Lawrence, McMahon and Dunnehew and the Dean boiler. So that was when they were actually accepting boilers into the plan. They had shut, closed the window for SOIs for accelerated repair and reopened it and made a communication, you know, a few months ago about it. We had no intentions on applying and then, you know, at the last minute, they sent an email about when the deadline is. So we, you know, we, we decided, you know, with, with Whitney's support, which roofs are actually 28 years old? Because the roofs have to be 28 years old in order to be eligible for this. And with all these projects, the reimbursement is usually 80% or 79%. So the city council has always been supportive of these projects. So we're looking to get a new roof at Holyoke High School North, at Kelly, at Sullivan, at McMahon and at Dunnehew. These schools weren't eligible in the past because of their age, but they're eligible now. And they are, you know, on our list of priorities. So what, what the city council voted on was just giving us permission to, to get in line and tell the MSBA, hey, we'd like to get in. They haven't approved us yet. They don't even know what we're applying for yet. The first step is getting the city council to say, yes, go after it. We give you permission to do it. And that's where we're at right now. It doesn't mean any of these are approved. It doesn't mean they're happening. It doesn't mean the city council has approved funding. It just means that we want to apply for roof projects and we got the city council to approve it. Then there'll be a separate vote that has to happen for feasibility, once approved and all that. And, and that stuff will go through the finance and operations subcommittee as recommended by Ms. Brunel.
And that would be my next comment is to entertain a motion that this gets referred over to finance and operations. I need a second? So the, the motion by Mr. Willihan and seconded by Dr. Rivera Cologne, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much. And I'm bringing this to our formal attention as well with the same intention that it gets referred to the same subcommittee. It was election day, just prior to election day, the day of the debates at the high school. When I myself had to rush from the soccer stadium in the back down to the auditorium and was appalled to see the condition of the exterior stairs at Holyoke High North Campus alongside McKenzie Field. It was then, so that was October, I first brought it up to the superintendent slash receiver. And I've checked in with him since and I know that like things are, you know, it's being discussed. But I wanted to formalize it because I think it's a serious hazard that leaves us at liability for getting sued if somebody falls. And when the accelerated repair projects were mentioned at Tuesday's meeting, Mike Sullivan was like, oh, I just went to a basketball game and those stairs are a disaster. And so like, I know we're looking into it, but I don't know how much and how urgent. So again, I'm bringing this up so that it can be referred to the committee, so that it can be placed with some urgency. You know, I don't remember the last time we got an overall report about our, our buildings. And what are we doing to our buildings on the, on the, you know, the long-term planning, the short-term planning, things like this, right? That, those stairs are bad. So I heard Mr., when Mr. Sullivan brought it up, Mr. Anderson mentioned that when the high school was upgraded last, I think when the science labs were done, that like half the staircase was done and half of it wasn't. And but again, it, it's a mess and I see it as a liability. So I think it's something that we need to urgently address. So again, I'd like to entertain a motion to refer this to finance and operations, hopefully to be dealt with at their next meeting.
Motion?
I heard Ms. Dr. Cabaniero with the motion and Mr. Willihan with the second. Any further discussion? Mr. Collmore?
Why does it have to come this far?
I don't know, Ronnie.
We have our receiver, we have head of maintenance in our schools. These things should not be happening. If it's a hazard, if, if there's something down the road, you can't get the tiles or something, that's an excuse and that's fine. But it doesn't have to come to the school committee to get things fixed around here. This, the superintendent, the receiver should know all about this and get it, get it fixed.
Thank you, Mr. Collmore. On the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. All right, I'm going in business. We're gonna hear, the mayor had to leave. Oh, I'm sorry, was your hand up?
Oh, yeah, but
Oh, I, I did not see it. No, no, it's not fine. You're also entitled to speak. I apologize. It was not brought to my attention. The motion did already carry, but if you'd like to add anything to the discussion, by all means, because I did not give you the opportunity. Please.
No, I, I mean, we're, we're going to do it. It's already in the plans. We're, we're lucky we have ESSER. As to the question why it hasn't been done in the past, like any, you know, any capital improvements that are greater than a certain dollar threshold, we can't use our school department money to do. With now, except with this ESSER money. So we have about $5 million of projects that we want to get done that we're, we need an OPM for. And we just did a bid on it for an OPM. Answer was the only bidder and you have to get two other respondents. So we're, we're working with the IG's office or to figure out like, hey, we, we put this out to bid. Only one person responded, what's the next step? So we got to go through that next step to get an OPM for all these projects. But it is on our list. We've set aside ESSER money to do it when I got the call from, from Ms. Brunel. And, and I, I did bring a finance facilities report last year to this body on all the great work that we've been doing in our facilities with ESSER money. If you look at all the entrances, thanks to the mayor's push, like what we've done in the front of Lawrence and the front of Sullivan and the front of Morgan, like we've done a lot of work, more, more work in facilities in the last four years than probably the last 20 years. So, you know, that, that, that's some of the work that I'm really proud of. The work that we've done in facilities, but that's, that's really the answer. We can certainly have more discussion around this in the subcommittee.
I guess to the point Mr. Collmore was making too is like, how, like, how did the, the maintenance staff at Holyoke High not notice the problem, right? And bring it to someone's attention for it to be added to a repair list before I had to call it out? So I, I think that's also to the point you're trying to emphasize.
That's why I'm getting at, you know, if they, if it's their job to walk around the schools and if they see anything that needs to be repaired before, you know, if it's just a small hole,
Yeah.
Fix it then, then wait until it's a whole hallway.
Yeah. And I think historically, it's been, you know, the, the capital requests have not felt in this community as like a real process. We add capital requests and they just stay on a list and they don't get funded. I, I am very much like encouraged by the mayor and his leadership. And like, I think their ability to do this stuff with ARPA money and, and other stuff. I think our facilities team has been like, why are we going to put this as a capital request? It's not going to get funded. Things like this never get funded unless it's MSBA. But like, you know, I need to change the culture to be like, I don't care if it doesn't get funded. We still have to make the request. So, you know, we
I, I already agree. And thank the mayor.
Yeah.
Capital improvement. We never had that over the years. Capital improvement money. Sometimes we, we would have to wait a year, two years. Sometimes we, we would have to wait a year, two years to get some money to buy a, a new truck that we needed very badly or something to that effect. Well, those things shouldn't have to wait. You know, we should have, like we're having now, a capital improvement plan to use. And let's just move forward and get these things done.
And to the point too, this is city property, right? So it's not school department property. The city of Holyoke owns the buildings. And therefore, if somebody sued, they're not just suing the school department, they're suing the city. So the city council needs to be conscious of that. When the department comes and requests money to fix these kinds of things, they have to be held accountable for that as well. Mr. Willihan, and then we're gonna move on, folks.
Real quick, yeah, just to follow up on what Mr. Collmore said. I mean, before the mayor, the current mayor, I mean, the city, city didn't have a capital improvement plan for the whole city, not just the schools, the whole city. So I mean, that's something that, that the new, the new mayor is working on. Thank you.
Alright, thanks everybody. So moving on to ongoing business, as was tabled from our last meeting, simply because the mayor had to step out. I'll turn it over to him for an update on the purchase of 225 High Street.
So here's where we are and I wish I had more to update. It's just, there's a team of people working on this. There's a meeting scheduled for March 4th with the finance committee of the city council. Where there will be a presentation offered on this, this proposal that's on the table. Moving the district office out from the Suffolk Street and into the, the old professional building, 225 High Street. Is the address right diagonally across from City Hall on Dwight and High?
The name of the building is Latino Professional Center.
Professional building, yeah. There's a funding strategy that I, that I put forward to the city council to sustain this acquisition. It's a friendly taking. The folks, the New England Farm Workers Council is in ownership of the building and they, we came to an agreement on the, the purchase price through this process. A funding strategy has been identified. Now it's just a matter of going through the process to secure the appropriate votes with the council. I want like, I, you know, the timing is terrible with all of this. My original intention was to be sure that those same documents and presentation came here to include the school board in this process as well. Now that I think about it, maybe at the, at the city council meeting, they should, probably should have sent the copy to the joint school board city council meeting. But the finance committee is March 4th. If members are available, I encourage you to either attend, participate somehow so you can receive that. And, and, you know, offline, Aaron, we can think about how we can be sure that maybe we can do the same presentation here or we could do it at a joint school board city council meeting, just to be sure that everybody's getting that, that information.
I think it's important to note too that this would relieve the, the lease at Suffolk Street, which has been a point of contention on city council for quite a time now. So one would think that they'd be in favor of this. But yes, to your point, this is not just for central office. It's also for transition academy, which currently leases at Open Square. So this is taking two leases off the table potentially.
If you're looking at the building, there's the tall building, the building everyone's envisioning. And there's a shorter two-story building. They share, that's actually one property. And so that shorter building, fully, it was recently renovated, fully accessible. And that's where we're looking to potentially put the transitions academy.
Ms. Wilson?
So it's at 6:30. Thank you. And are both buildings handicap accessible?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Collmore?
So we have, answer is the OPM. They've been actually, they're the ones, they're the ones building. There's work that needs to be done as far as like furniture. When I say handicap accessible, I mean, you can pull in.
Elevators.
Elevators. You can get to the offices.
But is there a push button for the door?
There's, there's still a lot of, uh, capital that needs to be invested into the building so that it's a functioning building as an administrative office. But again, like there's at, there, this whole time, the reason why it's taken as long as it has since the first time I presented to you months ago, this whole thing, was because we do have folks that were looking at like just evaluating the space and
Yeah, they're, they're, they're trying to do like a mini of facilities condition assessment to, you know, to basically assess the bones of the building, like how old the roof is. They're, you know, they're working with our team to figure out like what our needs are, like how many people do we have in central office? I think, you know, one concern that I know we need to iron out is parking. Right now, we have about 50, 55 parking spots. So the plan right now would be that, that garage. I don't, I drove by there and you know, I don't, I, I haven't done the study to see if there's 55 spots there available, right? So, oh, there's over 300. So he's already done that work. So, you know, we, there, there's a lot of work that has to happen. And to the mayor's point, it's not like, hey, we bought the building and we're done. Like, bought the building and there's gotta be some, some, uh, some facilities upgrades and renovations that would have to happen to be able to make that, uh, meet the needs. You know, make sure we have a family welcome center. There's some work that has to do, uh, has to be done for the transitions because they have to be able to, uh, cook. They have, have to have access for a kitchen and stuff like that. So there's some work that would have to be done. I think it's a, you know, I don't want to add too much into it, but I think if, if the city's in a position to be able to do this now, it's a smart financial decision to avoid like having to give the school department more money than net school spending, which they're currently doing and have been doing and, and have griped about historically, uh, having to give more money toward, for leases. This would solve that problem, but it doesn't come for free. Like it, there's a cost associated and an investment to make now where that if they, you know, we can do an analysis of what that investment would, what the return on investment would be. If we're able to eliminate, you know, rental, rental, uh, budget of 300 grand or so every year for the next 15 years, when would that pay off? And I know that the existing landlord is already like trying to set up a meeting with Josh because he wants to do some upgrades to 57 Suffolk Street. But he's saying that the, what the rent that we're paying right now is nowhere near market value and he's trying to like set it up to increase the rent. And he wants to have that conversation with, with the mayor. So the rent will be going up if, if, you know, he had his way and, and that would, you know, we would factor that into a return on investment calculation if we were to do that.
Alright. Keep going. You've got the microphone. Lean into your microphone.
I've been in that building many, for many years going through that building. And we always, always had trouble with the elevator. The elevator.
At Suffolk Street, you mean? At Suffolk Street?
No.
Oh.
I'm talking, High Street. And you see, they're gonna cost a lot of money to refix it or get us a new one. And that, elevators are, are really, really expensive. And that has to be included in, in this purchase price. And, and the other concern I have is, and we've been complaining, we complained at Suffolk Street. The fire escapes in the back alley. Okay? They're, they're deplorable. You, you know, you can't work them from top to bottom. There's, when you get off at the second floor to drop you down into the alleyway, that ladder never worked for years, but it was, it was approved and that, that has to be taken care of. Now, I don't know, maybe the mayor can answer, someone can answer. That alleyway was always accessible. Is it gonna be access, still accessible or are they gonna have dumpsters in the back alley where a truck can't pull in and unload? Or do they have to unload out on, lay it load out on the street and, and bring it into our building and stuff like this? I think these are things that really have to be, because they're expensive there. And, you know, if that's included in the price, are we gonna, is it worth going for?
Alright, seeing no other hands, we're gonna move on. There's no vote to be had on this at the current time.
March 4th.
March 4th is the finance meeting. Okay, updates from subcommittees. The initial agenda that went out accidentally had Dr. Caballero as being a member of the joint committee. She's not. So this, the new agenda has that typo fixed. So, uh, policy and governance, subcommittee, Ms. Wilson. You can provide an update and if you want, now would be a time to talk about the admin position.
So my computer has died. Oh, no. But, um, so it was sent back. So the, the, the admin position, job description was sent back to the subcommittee. So tonight's the subcommittee approved an updated, uh, policy. Uh, I'm sorry, an updated, uh, job posting. First, I'd like to let the full school, uh, school board know that, um, the job description was reviewed by HR. I, you know, I did get that information and they felt it was an appropriate job description. That we want the job description to include the major components of the job, but it doesn't include everything that the job entails. One addition was that we clarified that, uh, the job responsibility falls under meeting, open meeting law requirements. Mass General Law 30, thanks to 38. Thank you. Uh, thanks for Mr. Willihan. Second was, uh, Ms. LaFabe gave us the update language about ensuring that agendas are posted 48 business hours prior to a meeting, uh, not just 48 hours. And then there was another one.
If you don't recall, I can point it out. It was just the details, uh, because the subcommittees still were just listed as the four instead of the five.
Thank you. I'm like, I knew there was one more. So then it was just adding, um, the, that, uh, the last subcommittee. So that was really overall, um, the significant changes that were made. So I'm not sure if the full body is comfortable, um, voting to move forward on this or would prefer to wait to see the job description, that updated version before there is a vote.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve it. You wanna look at it right now?
I wanna, I just wanna see the description that we're gonna vote on.
Okay. So at the next meeting, I will have that. I will get that to Ms. Brunel, um, tonight after I plug in my computer at home. And I'll get that to you so you can.
I have it already. You already sent it to me.
Oh, I did, did I? I was gone. Darn, I'm good.
I'm still gonna ask to entertain a motion that we approve it tonight. If it fails, it fails. But I'd like to see, I'd like to entertain a motion that this gets, uh, approved tonight. If anybody wishes to make the motion, if not, so be it. No? Okay, that's fine. We can discuss it again. So it'll get tabled then. So I'll entertain a motion to table this for now and it will be brought up at our next full meeting with everybody having the opportunity to review the job description. Thank you, Mr. Collmore.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Um, and then you also approved minutes tonight, but those are going to our next meeting as well, right?
Those are going to the next meeting as well. And then, um, at the next meeting, I'm looking at our next meeting. Um, I looked at my calendar because I wanted to kind of be a robust, timely meeting. Being Wednesday and I wanted to say the 13th. I know one person on our committee probably will not be able to make it that day, but when looking at my calendar, it would be, uh, Wednesday, March 13th and I'd be looking to have it at 5:30.
Okay. Just let us know for sure. Once you've decided and it'll get posted.
Yep.
Uh, thank you so much. Uh, sorry guys, pulling up my agenda again. Alright, so finance operations. By the way, I put the members of, one second, I put the members listed because Mr. Collmore had asked for that. So Mr. Collmore, on your agenda lists out all the members of the different subcommittees. Dr. Rivera Cologne?
March, March 13 would be the DEI subcommittee meeting and we meet in the same space, so probably not.
Well, you tend to use central office and you can, but you're on the same committees. Alright, you guys can, let us know.
We will let you know. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, and also if, if you're consistently running into problems with attendance, let me know because I can reassign the committee if it becomes an issue. Okay, finance and operations subcommittee, Mr. Willihan. Um, I know you haven't met yet. A few things have been referred out. You have a meeting coming up next week, I recall.
March 8th.
March 8th. What time?
Uh, excuse me, I'm looking at 5:45 and I hope to have it in the central office.
In central office. There's no rule that says we have to have them here, huh? Seems odd to me, but okay. Alright, moving along then, um, Mr. Collmore?
We're discussing, uh, people on the agenda, uh, members on the committees.
Are we discussing it? No.
No, not discussing it, but, uh, you're gonna put the names of.
It's on there. On the agenda you have. All the names are listed.
I agree, but we didn't discuss if one of them was missing and we couldn't get a quorum.
Then I fill in.
Could it be, is it just you or?
According to our current, uh, rules, yes. The vice chair of the school committee can fill in at any subcommittee meeting to make quorum.
Do you know what policy you're referring to by any chance?
I don't, but we discussed it at the retreat. Someone looked it up. Was it you?
I can, I'll just take that into consideration for being effective.
Yeah, it's gotta be in section B somewhere. Uh, cause we asked about, we discussed that. We discussed whether or not we wanted to make them four members so that way to easier meet quorum. But we thought that that actually made it harder to meet quorum. So if any of the chairs are hosting a meeting and feel like they might not have quorum, feel free to let me know. And then I can be the official extra voting member.
I, I was just wondering if, uh, you couldn't make it and I'm not on the committee, but I'm there, can I make a quorum?
Unfortunately, not in our current structure. That's something that we could look to amend potentially in the future if you'd like, but that's not how we have it structured.
Okay, but I mean, it's still on the agenda. Look at it.
Can, it's not currently.
Can I like to make an emotion?
Hold on a second. It's not currently on the agenda. Hold on, I, I've got it right here. So this is what it says right now. Yeah, the vice chair will have the ability to make, it doesn't even say that. Ad-hoc committees may be formed by approval of school committee as necessary and members appointed by the vice chair. The vice chair will have the ability to make interim appointments to subcommittee. So this doesn't say that I can fill quorum, right?
What, what policy?
That's BDE.
Can we refer, I'd like to make a motion to refer that to the, uh, policy and governance subcommittee.
To refer what exactly?
BDE.
Aren't we working on reviewing all of our policies?
We are, but I, but, but in order to prioritize things, then, and I know B was in the next section, but I can bring that
Okay.
closer up. If, so I'd like to make that motion.
Alright, anybody want to second that? Uh, Dr. Caballero on the second. Um, any further discussion? Mr. Collmore? Microphone, I'm sorry.
The reason I'm thinking of, I'm sorry. The reason I'm thinking of that is that so many times you have two members and it takes three to
Well, two, two members is quorum. We discussed that at the retreat as well. So if it's a three-member body, two members is quorum. Ally, I'm gonna ask you to turn on your microphone, please.
Sorry. So it was quite humorous, uh, but yes, two, two people, uh, we did have a quorum tonight for our policy and, uh, governance subcommittee. It was interesting, but it ran smoothly.
Yeah. All set?
Is, yeah, as long, as long as they can hold a meeting. I don't want.
Agree with you completely.
I don't want members here, ho- the whole school committee here, but we can't have a, and the people on the, on the committee aren't here and we can't have a, a meeting.
And again, I encourage any chairs to reach out to me if they're having trouble getting attendance at their meetings because I can help. All right, on the motion. All those in favor? Any opposed? For the record, that's one opposed and it was Mr. Willihan. Moving on. Thank you. Do, 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 uh, joint school committee, city council, Ms. LaFave, I know you have a meeting scheduled now?
Yes, it's going to be March fourteenth at six thirty P M.
Here? No, city council chambers, folks. They run the show this year.
Correct.
Six thirty.
Thirty.
Anything else?
No.
Um, I want to remind us too that that agenda seems to always be very heavy of city council orders. So keep in mind, like, we can refer things there to ask city council about too, right? So it's not just one sided.
So you just mentioned about the building. Is that something that you? So currently, this one or wait for the next meeting?
So it's being, it's being discussed at finance on the fourth. Uh, city council finance. I feel like city council should have sent it to both, but didn't. So probably we should. So Mayor Garcia said that we should either have a full presentation at the joint or at the full meeting. Do you folks want to see a full presentation of the high street? The, the presentation that's gonna happen at finance Monday. Do we want to see that at the full meeting or at the subcommittee of the joint city council school committee? Subcommittee.
And you can participate at that meeting.
Yeah. Um, okay. So I heard that. So on the motion, then we're gonna refer, uh, two twenty-five High Street over to the joint committee. Cause that'll happen after finance. So you guys could even get an update there post-finance, which is great. Um, okay, on the motion. Uh, I heard Dr. Caballero on the motion. I need a second. Dr. Rivera Cologne? For further discussion?
Okay.
Uh, discussion, Ms. LaFave?
Yeah, so, so that I can email, um, and Jeffrey Anderson Burgos, what exactly and how do you want this? You just want me to put on there? What do we have here?
Uh, maybe to repeat the finance presentation.
Finance presentation.
At the joint meeting.
Purchase of two twenty-five High Street.
For the potential purchase of two twenty-five High Street, repeat the presentation from finance at the joint meeting.
What's your meeting?
March, March fourteenth.
Okay, good. We voted? Yes, moving on. We did not vote. On the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Thank you so much. Uh, diversity, equity and inclusion, uh, Dr. Rivera Cologne?
So we had our meeting and we review the minutes. So the minutes that were included for us are not the final draft. There's a few typos and stuff like that, but they, somehow the file is not the right one.
Okay. So on that then, the December D E I meeting minutes need to be tabled to the next meeting. So entertain a motion for that. Motion. Uh, motion by Ms. Wilson, seconded by Dr. Caballero. Uh, all those, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Thank you. Continue, please.
And then we had, um, and I'm hoping that that's gonna make it to our next meeting, which is the plan for collecting feedback on the naming of the replacement PEC building. We had a great discussion. We have our mock plan that was made possible and with the help of Mr. Soto and, um, Aaron, um, Lenville. So, yeah, we're really excited about it to be able to have all the feedback from all of you. So that way we can move forward and start collecting that feedback. Thank you.
Great. And then you had mentioned in your email to me that you also discussed something about a training. Did you want to bring that up tonight? Or do you want to discuss that when you approve your minutes?
Well, that was in our last meeting. So technically, I guess it should be for the next one, but just, just to put it on.
You can give it us an update and then it will be formal in your, in your meeting approval.
So, um, we, we want to recommend that the whole school committee goes through a D E I training the same way that the district is undergoing.
Great. So we'll look forward for that coming as a formal recommendation out of your committee when we approve your minutes. Wonderful. Ms. Wilson?
So I just have a question. Um, cause I remember at one point in our meeting, we were discussing whether PEC was able to be renamed or if it was a rebuilding. Then there was no renaming. So I'm trying to understand are we able, is it, is it a process where were we rebuilding PEC school or were we building a new building? Because I'm trying to understand the clarification about, do we have the ability to rename that location?
I mean, I believe technically as a body, we have the ability to rename any building at any time if we so choose. So technically, yes, we have the ability to rename any, that building and any other building. It's the decision of the body. Any further clarity? No?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I, that's my impression too, but let, um, let me, I'm gonna further look into it to see if it concrete says it somewhere. Cause I know, yeah, just to, just to make sure.
I just remembered the debacle, um, with, uh, Hoyok High School South.
Right, but that wasn't a school committee decision.
Thank you for that clarification as well. Ms. LaFave?
If we look at our policies, F F naming facilities, the Hoyok School Committee believes naming or renaming a facility is a matter of great importance. Ones that deserves the most thoughtful attention and selecting a name, the committee will give higher preference to names of deceased persons. Preferably local people who have made a significant contribution to education. When the need arises, a school committee may develop an orderly announced procedure which will lessen community or factional pressures. When naming a new facility, a prompt decision will reduce disappointments and advance community solidarity. A two-thirds vote of the school committee is needed to change the name of a facility.
Pretty cut and dry in that policy section. I love it.
But if you want to add more process information in there, then obviously that's something you would do.
Okay, uh, thanks everyone. Okay, moving on, if we could, all that background conversation. Um, okay, so local control subcommittee, I, uh, appointed Dr. Rivera Cologne as the chair. And then Mr. Romero and, uh, Dr. Caballero as the members of the committee. Um, keeping in mind, anybody else can sit in on all these meetings. I did ask who was interested in serving. So I tried to appoint those to it that, uh, asked to be on it. Um, please let us know when you'd like to schedule. Um, I know you want to meet first, so let me know what works for you. We can meet, discuss, and then, um, let us know at our next meeting what your schedule plan is. Um, I just like to remind everybody that at the retreat, we discussed the expectation is that you, the goal is to meet monthly. And also a reminder that it was requested that you work with your subcommittee to establish an annual goal. And how you're going to held yourselves accountable for whatever goal you establish. So please work on that when you are doing your next subcommittee, uh, meeting agendas. All right, um, finalize the twenty twenty-four calendar. I know we went over this at the last meeting, but I just wanted to formalize it and see if anybody had any, uh, any changes. You know, I forgot my sheet that I wrote it all down on. Unfortunately, I thought it was included as a attachment to the agenda and it's not. Um, I think we formalized it last time anyway, but I, again, I just wanted to like put it in the record. So I guess we'll table it to the next meeting. So I can remember to include it in the agenda. I apologize for that. Um, so I'll get that typed up formally and emailed to everybody. Um, I know we all agreed on it when we were working on it, but again, just to formalize it so that our student reps have a copy, a copy is online, Mr. Heinz has a copy and everybody like that. So, Mr. Willihan, did you want to comment?
Oh, um, I thought we had questions on like what meeting to, um, one meeting in July or one meeting in August and then which date that was gonna be.
Yeah, that was on my notes. We, we discussed it all and finalized it all and I should have typed it up and included it. So I apologize to you guys. I will get that to you tomorrow. And then, uh, we'll go from there. Uh, for, for March, I know our next meeting is the twelfth. So, okay. Uh, I guess I'll entertain a motion to table that formally then.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. A second? Uh, Dr. Cologne, thank, Rivera Cologne, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any, oh, sorry, any further discussion? I assume not. Hearing none. All those opposed? Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Uh, seeing nothing else there, announcements, Tuesday, February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, there's a FAFSA help night at Hoyok High School North Campus. Um, a CPAC meeting on Wednesday, February twenty-eighth. Where is that? Zoom? Okay, middle school groundbreaking ceremony. Has that been confirmed? So, yeah, so this is March seventh.
It says, I got it, the email, it was confirmed March seventh, arrival at three forty-five with a cutting at four P M.
Well, there you go. Um, all right, as far as the, uh, we didn't know it was confirmed, so thanks. Um, and then there's a family literacy night at Dunhuhr School on March seventh, twenty twenty-four. I also want to remind everybody which, um, the receiver did at the last meeting as well. But the weekly communications he puts out, bi-weekly communications he puts out, has all the events that you would maybe want to attend, um, to include meetings, um, games even, right? All the stuff. So if you want to stay up to date with all of the happenings, be sure to, to read that letter because that's where he's putting the information. Uh, I want to congratulate the Hoyok High, um, boys' basketball team on making the state tournament. Uh, they have a bye in the first round. The schedule has been posted for them. I'm not sure where the girls are at in their current play. I know they're, they're out in the Western Mass. I don't know if they made states. And any other announcements anybody has, please let me know. Mr. Soto?
Um, I don't have a date yet, but I wanted to let the school committee know that we're, we're working on hosting a community event, family event, um, uh, around the Student Opportunity Act. Got to submit, uh, a reapplication to the Student Opportunity Act. And part of that process is you have to have a community event. Um, it's gonna be sometime in March, you know, I'm thinking the fourth, uh, one, one of the, one of the teen dates. Uh, but we haven't solidified when, when that's gonna happen and, and I'll be sure to do that, um, uh, through the vice chair.
Can you make sure we find out when Ian, if Ian White is doing their cute little kid calling stuff? I always get upset. I see city counselors in those pictures and then I'm like, oh, didn't know about that.
Did you give a date and time for the boys' basketball?
I don't know it, Mr. Collmore.
No, that's right.
I, I saw the bracket, but it didn't have the day and times yet.
Right, okay, because I spoke to, uh,
Yeah, I think it depends on, because we have a first round bye. So I think it depends on who wins and then they schedule from there. So I'm not positive. All right, any other announcements or anything anybody needs to discuss before I entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
On the motion, seconded by Dr. Rivera Cologne. All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.